That's a big task. And so some will be celebrating. I'm not sure how the public feels. Kind of mixed emotions here. You know, some enthuse, some concerned about how fastly, fast we have moved along with this. You know, from the water side, I can just point out, so I'm a boater and I really feel that $14 million on that Phase One dock replacement, we're ready for. A lot of work's gone into that. They got detailed plans. They've got permits in. Those kinds of things are done. That's a compliment to that, that group that worked on that. So I think, you know, when you see Phase Two and Three kind of slide out a bit and you got the Seawall project, there's some concern about the future, but I think that work will proceed at a pace that the Enterprise Fund can service the debt. And we'll see how that works out, maybe 50 years from now. The other four projects, three are kind of in the ordinary course. I mean, we've got a plan on the Redondo work that's being done is ongoing. I'm a little surprised we're even using bond money to finish the financing on that. Seems like we should have gone with that. The paid parking equipment, that's in the ordinary course. Not sure we needed bond money for that. It's relatively small in value. We learned a lot from the last go around with that. Should make good decisions going forward. The Triangle and the Flag Pavilion, that's relatively small as well. So the real big project that's out there are the steps. And although we've talked about the steps for a long time, we have never had a public meeting on the specifics of the steps where you got inputs from the public. So we're getting promised public involvement now, but it appears to be kind of on the options that the city has developed. One of the options that I hope is there, but I don't know that it will be, is the option with an elevator or maybe an attractive tram versus the switchback. Solve the ADA issue that way. It saves you a great deal of space. And we're looking at that space and it ought to be for commercial and retail and, you know, the economic boom that you need down there on the Marina floor. So I guess when you look, all the projects are worthwhile. And I do feel like this has not been a case of development or no development. Everybody supports development. It's kind of the approach that you've taken with it. And that it's not what you're doing in the way of moving forward with the development, it's how you're doing it. The public feels left behind and when we're engaged, we are kind of run over. So we're looking forward to a new approach with the city in going forward with community engagement. Hopefully you've got the financing piece behind you with the approval of the bond package. And so we're excited about that part of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn Scott. Moving on to Mr. Rick Johnson.
Rick Johnson, Redondo Beach. I'm mad. I'm furious. You might be one, you might, is more like it. We have been bombarded for the last two nights along with speeding cars and three motorcycles were running up and down Redondo Beach Drive without lights on at 9:35 PM. 9:35 PM, it's not total dark, but it's dark enough you should have your lights on. The noise goes into the morning hours. I've made it clear the past eight years. I blame the city for not doing anything to do with the honorary parking lot, free parking. We thought we, that we were getting speedlight cameras at this time. Now we're told it will be August, if that. I called 911 last night, another pet peeve I have. The dispatcher told her, the, after I talked to the dispatcher, the reason for the call, I'll switch you to Des Moines dispatcher. I get that every time. I was left to hear from over and over, please hold on for the next dispatcher. This went on for three minutes. I finally hung up. I recalled and went through all this, all this prior to this. And I'm glad it wasn't a death, life or death call. My taxes, property taxes went up about $1,000. Now we have speeding cars, loud muppers, planes going over the house. That never happened until everyday use of the third runway. Your prior mayor joined the enemy, the Port of Seattle, and had a gall to show his face in this council. I attended candidates, or it could be, you scratch me, I'll scratch you, I don't know. I attended the candidates running the chief for police, a good turnout. If you broke down the geographic sections of Des Moines, Redondo residents were the most in attendance. There's something there that shows you that we're getting tired of the daily and nightly speeding. Do we have to see someone get killed out there? Is that what it takes? The boardwalk draws thousands, and I'm literally saying thousands of walkers. And in, the boardwalk draws, and I pray that, that days never comes when we have to put somebody, that somebody will be killed. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Moving on to the city manager's report. Michael, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. So a couple of items tonight. First of all, I'm going to ask Jeff Ren to do a presentation on finances for the fourth quarter 2022. And fourth quarter report for that quarter is essentially a look at what the close of the financial year brought.
Good morning. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Jeff Ren, Finance Director with the Fourth Quarter Financial Report. The full report is in your packet and also it will be posted to the city's website under the Finance Department after this meeting. I hope to be as concise and informative as I can, given the possible length of tonight's meeting. So to start with, look at the general fund. So overall, for 2022, revenue and expenditures both finished less than budget. So revenue was about $25 million compared to a budget of about $25 and a half million. On the expenditure side, it was about $24 million represented in blue are the actuals compared to a budget of about $26 million. Also of note is that revenue did exceed expenditures for the general fund. Different categories of revenue to highlight from the report is property taxes. And we're looking at a four-year trend of 2019 through 2022. So you can see, as the city's valuation has grown over the last couple of years, so has property tax revenue. Sorry, that was not intentional. So in 2022, property taxes finished at about $5.3 million of revenue in the general fund. Utility taxes show the same sort of growth from 2019 through 2022, finishing in 2022 at about $4 million, an increase over 2021. Regular sales and use tax. When you look at this chart, which this trend of 2019 dipping into 2020 and then growing, that's really showing you the pandemic in this timeline. So you can see it, sales and use tax in 2020 was around $2.9 million, but we finished strong at the end of 2022 at about 3.7. So that's nearly $2 million more than we had in 2020. So that really shows the impact that the pandemic had on the city's sales tax revenue. Further information on sales tax, these are the component groups from the report we get from the state. So this chart shows the different groups. The first column is the year-end total for 2021. The next column is the year-end total for 2022. And then the next two columns are the amount and percent of change. So as you can see, all the categories in black and the last column are increases over the prior year. So you can see construction is nearly 25% higher than 2021. And also the other two large categories, retail, trade, and services increased 11.8% and also 14.9%. The categories that were down were just manufacturing, which was down about $7,200. Automotive, down 28%, about $40,000. And then just miscellaneous was down 6%, which was just $12,000. So overall, it was a 13.87% increase over 2021. Business and occupation tax, you can see, still see the same kind of trend that we saw with sales tax where we have 2019 and then a dip in 2020 and then 2021. But I would comment on this one, with BNO tax, BNO taxes are paid along with business licenses. And in 2021, we switched over to file local system. And since then, we, we didn't get a great start with getting that system implemented. But through hiring a staff accountant, Dan Marina Lee, and our consultant, Diane Markot, working to streamline that process, one of the results is just we've increased revenue up to about $1.1 million. We're, even delinquent amounts have become a priority. So instead of just drowning in trying to keep up, we've gotten into a position where we're making sure people are paid up on their taxes. Red light running, this is a different trend because this has to do with driving behavior. So you can see the pandemic hitting in 2020 with that sharp decrease, but since then, it has not reached the levels of 2019. So in 2022, it was about $1.2 million is where we finished. It was slightly less than 2021. But this is one revenue category where we're interested in the public safety, probably more so than collecting the money. Though we have nothing against money, but. Operating expenditures, you can see here it's that same kind of trend from 2019 down to 2021 and then back up again, finishing at about $24 million. This also shows recovery from the pandemic and probably also the effect of inflation that kicked in last year. The general fund, fund balance continues to grow from year to year, from 2019 steadily up through 2022. We are, have a threshold of fund balance that we need to maintain that represents 16.67% of operating expenditures. That amount for 2022 is that $4,1,083. Our ending 2022 balance increased about $1 million, up to about $8.1 million. So we have just over twice what we need for two months of expenditures. Okay, leaving the general fund, we'll look at the enterprise funds. First, the Marina. The Marina's operating income last year was just over $1.8 million, which exceeded budget by $554,000. Their ending net position was a little over $15 million, which was about an $800,000 increase over the prior year. And the portion of that, that is unrestricted, was about $3.8 million. The other enterprise fund is surface water management. Their operating income was $2,365. That was in excess of budget of about $830,000. Their ending net position is $27.9 million, which was an increase of about 1.2 over the prior year. And their unrestricted portion of that net position is about $7.6 million. Other funds, we have a lot of other funds. But for all other funds, the expenditures in each fund were under budget at the end of 2022. So this would include the special revenue funds, the debt service funds, the capital project funds, and the internal service funds. As part of those funds, because there was interest from council in the REIT balances, especially as it relates to a possible approval of a bond ordinance, we wanted to include that in this report. So this schedule here, the first column shows the budgeted amounts, the second is the actuals, and then the variance in the third. So if you know, the budget does have expectations where we would use fund balance during the year. That's why the expenditures are budgeted at a greater amount than the revenues. So the change in fund balance that we expected would be a reduction of about one, a little over 1.8 million. But what actually happened was we did a little bit better than that where it was about $1.7 million. So the beginning fund balance in 2022 was over 3.7, but ended at about 1.9. And that, this is also REIT One, which is referred to as real estate tax first quarter because there's two percentages and they're both a quarter of a percent. This is the first quarter of a percent that is paid in tax. And then REIT Two, which is next, is that second quarter of a percent. So this is the same schedule and you can see it's the same as, as the first REIT where revenues are budgeted at a lesser amount than expenditures. So in this fund, we expected to use a little over $800,000 of fund balance, which we did. We came in a little bit under that by 22,000 where the change in fund balance was a reduction of about $810,000. So the beginning fund balance of REIT Two was about $2.5 million. After that, $810,000 usage of fund balance, it ended the year at about $1.7 million. Finally, this is the city's investment portfolio at the end of December 31st, 2022. So this is a list of all of our investments. And then the last two rows are, well, the second to last row where it says KeyBank, that is our bank account, and then LGIP is the Local Government Investment Pool. So in the bank, we had about $3.5 million. The Local Government Investment Pool was a little over $17 million. And if you were to add up all of those other investments, that would be about $29 million. So the total would be about $50 and a half million at the end of 2022. And that concludes that part of the presentation. Is there any questions?
Did you have something to say before I go to questions? Okay, council members, any questions? Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Jeff. Is it just me or are quite a number of these accounts, the delta is pretty high between budget and actual? I mean, I believe there was a change in accounting system this year, or is that not a fact? I've just, is it just, maybe it's just me, but I just see a number of these where it's like 40% delta between actual and.
I think what you're referring to is, as far as the change in accounting system, is we're reporting in terms of our annual report on a cash basis. That's why in the full report, you might notice, especially with the other funds, that I'm referring to the beginning and ending cash. I didn't do that, or we didn't do that for the general fund because in the code, we want to have that 16.67% of fund balance. So that, that's one of the differences. As far as a delta being high, I'd need more specific.
Well, okay. I mean, it's a wonderful thing, but so the Marina apparently brought in 550,000 more than, so.
Right.
So, you know, Yahoo, how come?
Let me, if I may, I'm not sure Yahoo is the appropriate expression for the amount of work and effort that goes into all of this. Perhaps it is for you. However, the, the point here is that we've just gone through a very difficult period of uncertainty based on the pandemic, based on expenditures, based on employees that, that either left or had family issues, whatever that was. So the delta was unknown. The fact that you're seeing a presentation here where literally every fund is in the black and every single fund there shows an increase of revenue over expenditure can only be considered incredibly good news, given the level of uncertainty we've just gone through.
If you say so. I'm just trying to find out, you know, why, because I just would, it would, I would feel more comfortable if the predictions were more in line with, you know.
And sir, if you were able to, if you were able to predict the impacts of COVID, we would have appreciated that greatly.
Okay, fine. So, and along the same lines regarding the investment accounts, any comment, commentary on, you know, the amount of, that we have in the bank and in these various funds, you know, going from 56 to 50, is that to be expected?
I would say part of that reduction is when we sell investments and cash them out. I think what we look at mostly is the proportion of investments compared to the cash. So right now, with $50 million, that would be a little bit more than half in investments. And so we keep our eye on how liquid we want to be in cash. As far as going from 56 to 50, I have to keep in mind that there's also capital expenditures on capital projects. So there can be some costs associated with that that can be rather large.
Yeah, no, I'm just asking if it's just, you know, of anything, you know, atypical. I mean, if it just goes up and down a few million here and there, if, if that's fine, that's fine.
Yeah, I would say that that would be typical. But if it keeps going down and down, then that's a concern.
No, I'm just, you know, whenever I see anything just, you know, change that amount, I just, you know, feel a need to ask. Thank you, sir.
Hey, I got a question for you. So it looks to me that your strategy this last in 2022 was to plan conservatively because you, there was the uncertainty. And the results here, obviously in next year's planning, you're going to have a better read of what it's actually going to go forward and expect to be closer to your number.
I think one of the things, discussions I had today was concerning parks programs. And the example was, if you were to look at the parks programs or the reason why the general fund was under budget on revenues and expenditures, that was a main driver because when we did the budget, as Michael said, you can't predict. So we did the budget in 2021, we couldn't predict what the regulations were going to be the following year, at what time, when things would open up. And so less expenses were incurred, less revenue was derived last year. This year, those programs are up and running. And so it's a lot easier probably to, to predict or, forgot, forgot the word, forecast what those are going to be. So that was, that's a good example of how COVID and trying to predict what's going to happen was a very large challenge.
I can say it's much like the businesses I manage and it's a very similar scenario. So that's why I added that. And that would be pointing to the variance. But like I said, a lot better to have them on the positive than the negative side. So, thank you. Councilmember Pennington.
Yeah, congratulations to you, the city manager, the city staff for the, the work and the diligence that's, and the care that has gone into, one, creating the budget, two, managing the budget and having fund balances that are, and a reserve that is essentially double what you, you needed to have. Because council member Nutting and I can remember back in 2017, when we were $750,000 from going broke and the city being divided up amongst the cities around us. And so it, and being here and having the, the, the level of reserves that we have, having the fund balances in the, in the black that we have was not by accident and not by happenstance. It was through leadership, it was through planning, it was through diligence of, and care of the public money. And it, it took a lot of time and a lot, and a lot of work to get here. So congratulations to all of you. Thank you to all of you for, for not getting us in the same position we were in. Before, it was literally, literally a shell game between department divisions as to who was going to get what and what fund was going to pay for what. And it all came to a head in 2017. So thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, before you go on, City Manager Mathias, I just want to caution the public. Any comments or outbursts, I will, I will take action. Thank you. You can continue.
Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate that. So we had a comment about, about the ferry service. We would, we're as anxious as everyone else to have specifics. Appreciate your diligence to stay on target with that. Let me give you a good news. Finally, Monday night, after completing all of the Coast Guard inspections down in San Francisco Bay, dealing with, experiencing calm weather and part replacements that were necessary and the full staffing that they needed, our boat set sail Monday night. It passed last night, it overnighted in Coos Bay. It arrived in Newport, Oregon earlier today and is on track to come to Des Moines tomorrow. So we're excited. There will be a few days of Coast Guard inspections for seaworthiness in Puget Sound. And they will do a couple of runs just to kind of test out doing the actual, the actual tours. We hope to start service tentatively June 15th, Thursday, June 15th. But once it's here, it'll be much easier for us to predict what the schedule is going to be and what the timing. And we will absolutely post that on multiple places to let the, the community know where we are. So we're very excited. I think that involved a lot of prayer and a lot of people's parts to make sure that that, that's going forward. The last item I want to bring up tonight was the, just to share with the community and with the, the council, think generally aware, but we just went through a process to try and identify a, you know, a very like important position in the city, the chief of police. And we went through a process, and I just want to share with you what that process was. We worked, originally we contracted with WASPIC, the Washington Association of Sheriffs and Police Chiefs, to help us with the candidate recruitment. We recruited locally and then we opened it up nationally. We received nine applications, which in this day and age and in this climate is great. We went through those very carefully. They submitted resumes, cover letters, supplemental applications. They, we went through that process. Then we convened several panels. We identified three candidates who the community met the other night. Those were the three. What we did was we had an internal staff panel. We had an external staff panel, two of our members, Mr. Emery and Ms. Curtis are here, who helped us along with several, several others. We had John Accroche from SCOR, who's their captain of operations. We had Scott Logan from the school district and Doug Myers from Edward Jones, the community members. And they, they did a very thorough and great job, as did our internal staff. We then had the community meeting. People identified who their preference was. We reviewed those, tabulated them, reviewed them. The next morning, we had what we call a zero interview, reverse interview, where the candidates came in, they met with myself, with Ken Thomas, our current police chief, and with Vic Pennington. Unfortunately, he has Harvard background, but also the fire chief, former deputy mayor, current council member. And, and we met with them and they asked us questions and then we had questions for them. It was more of an engaging dialogue, interactive type thing. So we did that for an hour yesterday morning with each of the candidates. And we are in the process of making a decision. We will contact the, the candidate that we've selected to work with them on their availability. And we will be announcing that most likely the beginning of next week. So that was the, the police chief process, very extensive process. Really appreciate. Really appreciate all the input from the community, all the input from people that served on the panels, comments people had. And I think also just, you know, that it kind of can be slipped by. But, understanding the civility, the professionalism, and the conduct of the three candidates, I think respectful of our community and of our city was really a positive to see. So, with that, I think our staff that helped put it on, Bonnie was involved and Tara and others. AJ, of course, was at the heart of everything. And so, hopefully, we'll have a good choice and we'll be happy to introduce, hopefully shortly, our new police chief to the, to the city. Thank you, Mayor. That concludes my report.
Thank you, City Manager Mathias. Will the city clerk please read the consent agenda, her calendar?
Item one, Juneteenth proclamation. Item two, Arts Commission appointment. Item three, Administrative Office of the Court's reimbursement agreement. Item four, Des Moines Marina surveillance cameras. Item five, 2024 skip work plan and budget. Item six, Duong's Single Family Resident Shoreline variance process. And that concludes the consent calendar, Mayor.
Councilmember Nutting?
I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
I have a second. I have a second for Councilmember Pennington. Is there any council member that wishes to pull an item? Councilmember Steymet?
Yes, I'd like to pull item four.
Item four. Okay. Is there any others? Seeing none, we will be voting on items one, two, three, five, and six. All those in favor of those items, raise your right hand. I'm looking for the word here. Sorry. Unanimous, yeah. Sorry about that. I got thrown off a little bit. But, yeah, the vote on those was unanimous as expected and we will move to item four once I read the proclamation. Whereas, on January first, eighteen sixty-three, President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation, setting in motion the end of slavery in the United States. And whereas, the Civil War ended with the surrender of General Lee at Appomattox Courthouse on April ninth, eighteen sixty-five. And whereas, this news reached Texas when Union General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston Bay with Union troops. It was on June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five that he announced, "The people of Texas are informed that in accordance with a proclamation from the executive of the United States, all slaves are free." And whereas, celebration of the end of slavery, which became known as Juneteenth, is the oldest known public celebration of the end of slavery in the United States. And whereas, Juneteenth commemorates African-American freedom and celebrates the successes gained through education and greater opportunity. And whereas, on a larger scale, celebration of Juneteenth reminds each of us precious promises of freedom, equality, and opportunity, which are at the core of, of an American dream. And now, therefore, the Des Moines City Council hereby proclaims June nineteenth as a day to celebrate. And Juneteenth, Juneteenth two, twenty twenty-three, in the city of Des Moines, Washington, sign this day, Mayor, Mayor of Des Moines, Matt Mahoney. There we go. All right. Think, a little pause there for a moment. That's quite an achievement for this country. And I think it's a wonderful, wonderful thing to celebrate on an annual basis. It reminds us of the great things that we are good for, rather than humanity where it can be scarred with some of the negative impacts. With that being said, I'm going to turn the floor over to Councilmember Steymet on item four.
Yeah, I had several questions about this, this particular item. And I'm hoping I can, you know, get some answers. The, the background piece, right at the beginning, references that we've previously had surveillance cameras down there that were hardwired in but weren't doing well in the weather and became essentially pretty ineffective for doing that. Is this an expansion of those cameras or just merely a replacement of the, oh, hi, Scott?
Hi, thank you.
Is this an expansion or, or is this a replacement?
This, this is actually a, a new system, an updated system. The cameras we have now are quite, quite old, old technology and everything else. And so, this is an additional, well, this is twenty-three cameras. Right now, we have, I think it's eight in our parking lot. This will be twenty-three in our parking lot with the capability of tilt, pan, zoom. We'll, it's all wireless. So, we'll be able to put these in some positions where we kind of have dead spots in the marina, things like that. And it's not, I don't like the word surveillance, you know, because.
That was my next question.
Yeah, because, you know, I don't want to spy on anybody. These are more security cameras, more safety cameras. You know, such on Saturday, we had somebody that went around the new parking lot and pulled out all the plants, threw them in the water. Someone told us about them and they said they got in this truck. We saw this truck in the existing camera, but you can't get a license plate, you can't get anything. So, this new technology and new cameras and new spots will help us do things such as that. We're also going to install them on the new breakwater. So, we'll be able to see boats that come in and out. And if there's a problem on a dock, you know, they might say, hey, no, we can see nobody went on the dock. But, we can see if a boat came in, parked in a slip and did some bad stuff. So, yes.
Okay.
And this technology is also the same technology we have down at Redondo right now, where so the police can look up these cameras anytime to check on things and make sure things are, if they get a call, they can just look really quick to make sure. If someone calls, said, hey, I got ten cars on the, on the boat ramp, they can check really quick and by that, they might be gone. So, you know, they don't have to waste their time to go down there. And we can do that. We have a day phone and we have a night phone. So, we're around twenty-four, seven. So, we can help our tenants with any emergencies they might have or concerns they might have.
So, from your description, it sounds like the focus is much more on the vehicles or, or the boats going in and out than it is on individuals in the marina. Is that correct?
No, just exactly that. It's, you know, one of the CSR, we watched a car come in. One of our CSR employees got his van stolen. We watched that car go out and we watched the van go out behind it. But, we weren't able to get license plates to do anything to, to do anything to help. So, hopefully, this new technology, having more cameras in more specific places will help us with some of these safety concerns.
And that's the, the third thing is the license plates. It sounds a lot like the flock cameras. Are they going to be, have that kind of auto check against, you know, calls out, you know, be on the lookout for this license plate number?
No, it's only, it's, this whole system is put into the marina, into the network of the marina and everything else. So, if we do see something that's, the kids breaking, when we had the gatearms, when the kids broke off the gatearms, we'll be able to send that license plate up to the police department, say, here's the footage of this person getting out of his car, wrecking our machinery, and here's the license plate when he drove away. And what happens from that, you know, we hope, you know, something comes from it. But, no.
Okay, so we're not, we're not intentionally spying on people down there. We're just trying to.
Not a bit.
See if anybody's, you know, catch, catch the, the bad guys that we all know are there.
Just security and safety.
All right.
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Harris?
Thank you. So, you know, just to be three hundred percent clear, this will be limited to the city employees and the police.
That's correct. It's only on the police, it's only on the police. I'm, I'm not sure if it's in their cars or on their phones. I can't recall. And then our two marina phones and our, and our cameras that work.
And I'm not trying to get into the weeds, but you can reassure me that, like, you know, your average guy with a Wi-Fi scanner can't.
Well, that would be more of a Dale and Chris question for you.
I'm just, just, you know, and do we have any note on data retention, like thirty days, sixty days?
I think it's beyond thirty days. Right now, with our old technology, we have thirty days. But, I think this one is beyond. I'm not exactly positive. I'm sorry.
Is it possible to get that number?
Of course, yep.
Let me know in the council. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you. Really quick, can we get a motion on this? Councilmember Nutting?
I move to approve the contract with Winfield ISP to install new camera system throughout the marina property entrance channel and parking areas at a cost not to exceed sixty-one thousand, one hundred and five dollars and fifty cents and direct the city manager to sign the agreement substantially in the form as submitted.
Doug, I have a second, but Councilmember Pennington. Any question, further questions or discussion before we take a vote? Councilmember Steymet?
No, actually, I'm just trying to look in the contract to see if data retention is listed in there. If there was a short answer to it.
It's not listed in there.
It's not. Okay, thank you. Just, just checking. Then, nothing further.
Councilmember Pennington?
So, I guess the, the question for our attorney is, would these videos be, would they fall under the, the Public Records Retention Act?
They are records of the city, yes. So, there would be a, a certain amount of time by statute that we, we would be required to maintain them. We could maintain them longer than that, but given the, probably the size of the data, I imagine we would like to get rid of them as soon as reasonably, reasonably possible after the, the, the time that we're required to keep them.
And, and do you happen to know what that time is according to the act?
You know, there are a million different rules on that.
It's actually quite a while.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I mean, we could, we could look into that, just like the harbor master said. But, yeah, there's, there's a minimum that we have to keep them and our IT director does not like us to keep things longer than that.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any further discussion before we take a vote? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passed seven, zero. All right, I'm forward. I will now open the public hearing for the Transportation Improvement Plan for 2024 through 2043. The staff presentation by Public Works Director Andrew Murgis. Sir, you have the floor.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council and city manager Mathias. My name is Andrew Murgis, Public Works Director for the city. Tonight, I want to do a brief presentation on the Transportation Improvement Plan from 2024 through 2043. So, what is the Transportation Improvement Plan, or TIP as we call it? It's a prioritized list of eighty-nine planned transportation projects. And even though we have financial numbers in there, it's not financially constrained. There is no allocation of money. It just gives a ballpark idea of how much an investment may cost and tells us in what year maybe we would be targeting to do that, that investment. All the projects listed in the TIP are derived from the CTP or Comprehensive Transportation Plan. And that is a twenty-year long-range plan that kind of tells the city, here's how growth from a transportation network perspective keeps up with growth of the city. It, the CTP sets policies, goals, strategies to help guide decisions for existing and future conditions for the transportation system, as I mentioned. And it also defines a manageable network of arterial roadways, priority pedestrian networks, bicycle networks, transit service, all in an effort to promote multimodal facilities in the city. So, how do projects get into the TIP? From the CTP, as we mentioned, we look at safety, capacity, pedestrian and bicycle needs are our top priorities. We also look at supporting transit, kind of like the federal light rail that's coming through the city right now, as well as partnerships with like Metro to try to figure out if there's any crossover there. We also look at analysis of the transportation system as a whole through traffic engineering studies. We also take in citizen input and concerns throughout the year to kind of reanalyze. Are we doing our projects? Are they planned well in the TIP? And then, we also do a lot of work to try to find inter-agency coordination with utility providers or other local or state organizations like the city of Sea-Tac, Sound Transit, WashDOT. We try to partner as much as we can so we don't duplicate work. And if you can find a partnership, usually you can get more out of your dollar spent on a, on a project. So, how do we, what, what is the TIP used for? It provides direction to staff for the development of the six-year capital improvement plan, which will be part of the budgeting process coming up later on in a few months. We do a lot of project planning and coordination with utilities in neighboring cities. That's part of that inter-agency collaboration to try to maximize everybody's investment as much as we can. Predominantly, it's required by state law. So, we have to submit it by July thirty-first every year. It's just a state, state RCW. We report it to WashDOT and PSRC. That gets integrated into their long-range planning processes as well. And from a, from a day-to-day operational perspective, the TIP is used to position projects for grants and loans. So, a lot of grants that we receive, if a project isn't identified in the TIP, and these are transportation projects, if it's not identified in like a long-range plan like this, grant agencies are more reluctant to provide funding for a project. They, they tend to say, okay, we want you to invest in strategic priorities, not just short-term, I want to do this type of project. So, a lot of grants are based on the, on the TIP. The process we went through, we, we had public noticing on May twenty-fifth and June first of this year. Public comment tonight, if there's any, I haven't heard any in public comment earlier today. We had one public, public comment received by email and that was to install street and park lighting directed at Soundview Park from Fifth Avenue South. And we kind of reviewed that in the Transportation Committee before this meeting as well. Couple little highlights from 2022. I always love to say, okay, what did we accomplish in the TIP? Because it is a really big document. So, priority number one, the pavement preservation program. We had a great, great time finishing our improvements of pedestrian as well as pavement. Improvements down at Redondo Way, Redondo Beach Drive intersection, that turned out wonderful. We also were able to pave the Woodmont Drive South from Sixteenth to Woodmont Beach Drive South, where the pavement always was ground up a little bit. So, finally paved that over after many years looking at it and driving over it. We did a lot of citywide spot repairs, so major potholes, things that are above and beyond the ability of our crews to do. We, we did a lot of those this past year. Safety, priority number two, the Traffic Safety Improvement Program. We did install four driver feedback radar signs last year, one on Twenty-Fourth Avenue South, one on Two-Fiftieth, and I believe two on Two-Sixtieth. Could be the other way around on Two-Fiftieth. There could have been two there. Priority three, ADA compliance program. Every year, we, we move forward with trip hazard removals and ADA curb ramp replacements. So, that's just a, a great program in general. Priority number four, we finished the North Marina Bulkhead and Restrooms project. So, that's a great one to cross off the list and get out of the TIP. Priority number six, Sound Transit, still under construction, still working with Sound Transit. We've got College Way that's going to be under construction in the summer. So, another great partnership on that one. Then, priority number seven, with WashDOT, the Gateway Project for us, our five oh nine and their two-sixteenth bridge rebuild that will highly benefit the cities of, of Des Moines, Kent, and also Sea-Tac. They'll be under construction later on this year. So, great work in 2022 and some of this will keep going for a few more years. A couple of proposed revisions. So, we didn't revise much in the TIP. Priority number four, we removed that project. We finished it. The South Two-Hundredth and One Hundred Ninety-Ninth Street improvements, segment one. We reprioritized that project from twenty-one to ten due to successful Safe Rocks to School grant funding the city was awarded this year. So, so great priority. I'm glad we can start design and get to construction on that one. It's ten years in the making for, for that project. Priority fifteen, we updated the, the project description for South Two-Twenty-Third and Cliff to focus on connectivity between the marina and downtown. So, just a, just a little bit of description update to align better with some, some grants that we have and, and future grants. Priority seventy-five, South Two-Nineteenth Street cul-de-sac improvements we removed due to alternate improvements that Sound Transit constructed at that street end over there. So, that one was not needed. But, in general, really no major changes except just the removal of the, the Bulkhead project. And that is the end of my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. It's now time for the public comment portion of the public hearing. Has anyone signed up to speak?
No, ma'am.
Okay. The, if there is any, so if there is anyone who wishes to speak and didn't sign up, say so now. I see, I see Ms. Andrews. You may come to the, the podium. You all have three minutes to speak.
I apologize for not knowing that I should have known about this coming up and should have signed up to speak. But, since the Two-Twenty-Third Street and Cliff Avenue portion relates to what I talked to you all about just before he got here, I think, during the public comment, where could I find that and, and, and find out what's in it so that I know that it's, it is, what's, what's being covered in that particular portion? And perhaps, Andrew, you could, could tell us?
Can I speak at this point?
Sure.
Yeah, so from the public perspective, we actually have a grant for the Two-Twenty-Third Corridor. So, the public outreach on that planning project right now should occur within the next month, a month and a half. So, it'll be a lot of information coming out to the public. And I think on the city website, either under news or somewhere else, there's a Two-Twenty-Third, I forgot the exact title, but planning project link you can link to that talks more about that project and the description change, things like that. So, a lot of information on the corridor coming up.
And, and, and we can go, we can find out when that's taking place and be present?
Yes, there is, there is public information online for that project, and there'll be more public outreach that the city staff will, will engage in with the public over the next month, a month and a half.
Oh, that's good news. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there, is there anyone who wishes, also wishes to speak? Seeing none, second time. Is there anyone who didn't sign up but wishes to speak? Seeing none, third and final time. Is there anyone who didn't sign up that wishes to speak? I will now close the public hearing. Is there a motion? Councilmember Nutty?
I move to approve draft, excuse me, I move to approve draft resolution number two-three-dash-zero-three-three, adopting the 2024-2043 Transportation Improvement Plan for the City of Des Moines.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Deputy Mayor Buxton. All right, this will be the time. Questions from the council? Councilmember Samet, you have the floor.
Yeah, if I, Andrew, just, you probably need to get comfortable up there. Just, the previous council, I remember, had made a big deal about wanting to repave all the roads. And we, there was a lot of talk about really embarking on that project, and it was going to be funded long-term. I, I don't see it. I may have missed it. Are we still continuing to try to pave all the roads? Do we have that in the, in the plan? I assume between now and 2040?
So paving all the roads is going to be an ongoing challenge, no matter where you are in the country. I mean, there's not enough money to pave all the roads. There is a, a project in the TIP, the pavement preservation, as well as in the CIP, in which we actually have various funding sources that pay for roadway paving. So, for example, the Redondo Way, and Redondo Beach Drive paving and ADA sidewalk improvements, that came out of that pot of money dedicated for roadway paving, basically putting asphalt on the road. As well as, as well as the Woodmont from Sixteenth down to Woodmont Beach Drive, that was all paid, paid for through that fund. So we do have a dedicated source. It's limited, so it doesn't get us that far. But we do have ongoing revenue to still put into paving.
Okay, thanks. Secondly, is...
Councilmember Samet, just, I'll, I'll add a little bit there. In the priority one on this document, there is over between 2024 and 2043 roughly seventeen million dollars set aside for paving. I just wanted you to know that as well.
Thank you.
And I apologize. You have the floor back.
If I can throw another example out there, the previous work on North Hill or the Two-Twenty-Third rebuild project that we did, was it two years ago now? Maybe three years ago now? Those projects were also paid for by the Arterial Paving Fund as well too, dedicated to nothing but asphalt.
Okay. Secondly, is there, you know, everybody in their own neighborhood sees the problems in their own neighborhood, obviously. And is there a process by which, you know, people can say, hey, I think this needs some attention, or would you pay attention to this? For example, between Two-Fortieth and the end of Marine View Drive, where it curves around, what sometimes is called Dead Man's Curve, there are a number of low spots. Pavement isn't cracking yet, but you, you know, you get a little waiver in the road. And how do people bring that to your attention and, and sort of start moving it up the list? Can you explain that process?
There's two things I want to talk about. So a lot of public, we receive a lot of public comment on road conditions. So potholes, wavy roads, things like that, that we take in as Public Works, and either we respond to go fix a pothole, or the engineering team kind of keeps a list of, hey, here's a problem area that we, that we've heard about. We go out and look at it, and that kind of stays on our radar. Now, when it comes to the Arterial Paving Fund, CIP, there's kind of two revenue sources. One of them is dedicated towards arterial roadways only, not local roads. And the CIP in general has been, been defined by council to focus more on arterial roads than in the neighborhoods. That, but that doesn't mean we don't focus on neighborhoods. We look for opportunities. So generally, when we do an arterial roadway, I'll try to see if I have, we have enough funding to branch out into those neighborhoods from that arterial as part of that project. North Hill was a little unique. We were able to kind of sell that as we were getting, getting, we were only paying fifty cents on the dollar with partnership with the utility to pave those roads, which were more local. So yes, we, we have an ongoing list of problem, kind of general areas. It's just we don't have a big enough bucket of money to jump on those in a really timely manner.
Okay, doing one more. And this is, this may be a little bit of a curveball. So if you're not there, that's okay. But given what just passed the state legislature in terms of middle housing and essentially eliminating single-family home zoning so that you can now put multiple dwellings on what used to be single-family lots, that's going to create a real burden on the utilities. Has there been any reach out, or have you had any look at what the implications are going to be in terms of the roads as they need to get paved over, and how we can coordinate that to try to make it more feasible, hopefully cost less for everybody?
Sure. Yeah, I can't speak for the utilities, but I mean, if the utilities have to do a project, we try to partner as much as we can to share that burden. So for example, our Twenty-Fourth Project, Highland Water District, and the other utilities, we're in inter-local agreements that the council has seen to help share that burden, to improve those roads over time. Now, as higher density comes in, there is a, there is a real threat that, yeah, that's going to put more stress on our roadways that haven't seen that or weren't designed for that. And what do you do about that? A lot of it's road rebuilds, and that's very expensive work to do. So partnerships is, is a big piece of it. I would have to defer to the planning director on, is there any future triggers for higher density that would cause like an increase in traffic impact fees, for instance? I'm not quite sure on how that's going to pan out. But yeah, it's something that's on our radar that we've got to pay attention to.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Pennington?
So could you give us an example? And I'll, I'll say Two-Twenty-Third, because I know how much that one costs. But that was roughly from Marine View Drive to the, the fire station, Twenty-Fourth Avenue. It's just a little over a mile. I mean, it's one, it's one mile of my driveway to the fire station. And it's, so it's like one point one. And that was like a million bucks for, for that mile of roadway.
Yeah, usually like right now, in today's dollars, you get a mile of a non-principle arterial, so kind of like a heavily-used route, but not a Two-Sixteenth or Ninety-Nine. A million and a half dollars will get you about a mile. So it's very expensive.
So it's all relative, and it, so it's all relative also to the, because it's, you know, asphalt is petroleum-based. The particular petroleum prices at that time sometimes drives that, that even higher. But so, and then you mentioned the utilities, and, and we were going to partner with them. Is that if they have work that has to be done? I know, I think the last one that comes to mind was, was Eighth Avenue between Two-Twenty-Third and Two-Twenty-Seventh. I think we did something with Fifty-four down there. So, so do they share in that automatically, or if they have repairs, then, then that kicks into sharing? I don't recall that, that part of the...
It depends. There, we have inter-local agreements with the utilities that the city and the utilities have agreed to. And there's different rules to, to do your work by. Generally, staff in general always have a collaborative approach to try to say, hey, we've got this project in utility. Do you have any work going on at the same time, or vice versa? And then what usually happens out of that is usually you like to either put the utilities in with the road rebuild, so you're not ripping out a new road and having to repave a new road from the utility perspective, or we don't want to pave something where we know utility has something on the books in a couple of years. So we try to accelerate their capital schedule as well. Like Twenty-Fourth was an acceleration for Highland Water District to try to get their work incorporated into our contract. Does that answer it?
Yeah. So have you, so have you had relatively good luck with them sharing that, or how?
The relationships have been strong at the staff level to, to find those joint efforts to, to maximize the economy of scale of construction costs.
Thank you.
Councilmember Oxiger?
Yes. Is there any responsibility on the part of the utilities for, you know, damage that is being caused by their vehicles? I'm thinking particularly of Soundview Drive and Redondo. The heavy equipment that's going in and out of the Redondo Treatment Plant is causing a huge breakdown on the, on the roads. Is, is that their responsibility? Any of that their responsibility, or is it solely ours to deal with that?
In, in that case, I mean, it's a public roadway. The, there is no, I, I, there's no agreement or something set where the utility has to pay for that use. Now, when the utilities come in and do work within the public right-of-way, they pay for right-of-way fees, and they pay for restoration, which could include roadway overlays. And utilities have been doing that. Like, for example, if PSC comes in and has to redo a little bit of a gas line, they have to repave half of the roadway or a full lane width within a certain amount of distance that the engineer's set for that. So we've been pretty proactive lately on trying to have those responsible parties mitigate their damage when they come through with their work.
Okay, but that's, that's if they're actually, you know, performing restorative or, or some kind of, of work. It's not overall users.
There are no road usage charges.
Pardon?
There are no roadway usage charges on users of the public right-of-way.
Okay, thank you.
Before both of you, I'll, I'll go with myself, Councilmember Harris, and then Councilman Pennington one time, for a second. Obviously, we're here about this document today. We obviously reviewed it in Transportation Department, and being on this, this group for now, coming in my sixth year, I'm always impressed with the document. A couple, a couple of the things I really want to compliment you on and let the public know is that particularly schools, in two particular cases, we are using state-funded money for safe routes to school on Twenty-Fourth, and it'll be up on North Hill on Two-Hundredth. And that's very important to get that money and ensure the safety of our children. Another one is, we received some great funding for trails, the Barnes Creek Trail, which will eventually connect to the rest, to the sound trails and so forth, and tie up to Highland College. And you have very comprehensive numbers for that and got some of the funding. The, the next one is, I think, this document, while not perfect, has a great assessment of most of the neighborhoods and, and projects within those neighborhoods. And then the major arterials as well is documented in here too, in a realistic. Now, some of these are down the road, but they're on the radar. One of the greatest things that's happened in quite a few cases is the solicitation of funds or grants or so forth that your team has done, has moved some of the projects, and I'll use the, the North Hill, the Two-Hundredth, One-Ninety-Ninth piece, where that was far down the list, and you guys were able to get a grant, and it's been moved up, and it's going to be a reality. In the end, as I said before, the goal is that we're going to get our children to school safely. So I think this is a very comprehensive document, and the reason why little changes are is just because either things have been completed or moved up because you got the funding. And I think there's a fair assessment in planning, what the, what the cost will be and so forth. So I will be supporting this document. With that, I'll turn it over to Councilmember Harris, and then go to Councilmember Pennington.
Thank you. These are sort of just three aspirational things I mention every year. First of all, the, the other side of the sidewalk, Two-Fortieth around the elementary school, you know, I always look to see if that could be moved up the list to basically make sure there are sidewalks on both sides and so on.
Yeah, we're tracking that.
I know. I'm just, I gotta, I gotta ask about it. The other thing is the corner around, you know, Kent Des Moines and Twenty-Fourth. Just, you know, the parents want to be able to get around the corner and get their kids to school. And there really should be a sidewalk that takes them all the way around. And third, I was very pleased to hear you mention some form of shuttle bus in tandem with the new light rail. And this is just, there needs to be something analogous to the six thirty-five, and it should be happening not like after, but now. You know, anything we can do to make that a positive, rather than getting it down the road a couple of years after it opens, you know, it should be there and waiting. So that's it.
Councilmember Pennington?
So I just want to follow up on, on Gene's concern with utilities. Now, so if I, I just want to have clarity on this. So I understand there's no road use tax, but that, that's a, a primary drive-through for them. And I understand it's a public road, but it's a primary drive-through designed for vehicles that, that, you know, are, are, you know, single-family vehicles, pickup trucks and, you know, cars and, and that. And they carry, because of pretty heavy rigs that are down in there in the sewer treatment plant. So is there, is there something that we can work out with the utility district to maybe help shore up that piece of the roadway, that, that section, what is it, Two-Eighty, Two-Eighty-Fourth or Sixth, that this road that comes up off of Redondo Beach? Okay, and, and up around the corner to go back in to make that a, a heavier base so that, that, you know, we don't have to come back all the time. We repair the road, and then it, it gets damaged. Is, is you think there's a way to work with them to, to help pave that, that piece of roadway that goes back in there? Because I, you know, because if they, if they, if they blow out a, a main, like happened here recently, you know, the roadway, that, that damage is, is paid for by them, right? So, and again, I, I know it's a public road and, and, but it's, they're, they're, they're heavy vehicles in that, in that it's their driveway to their plant. I mean, there's no, really no other way to get there. So I'm, I'm just wondering if, if, if maybe, you know, we could talk to them and, and talk about some sort of a solution to, to repave that road and make sure that it, it will handle those heavy, heavy trucks.
Yeah, I don't know of any avenue in which you can have the utility partner against their will. I think the utility, a conversation...
No, I'm not saying, right, I'm not saying against their will, but I'm just saying, you know, go and have a conversation with them and say, hey, look...
I think that, that could be okay. I think the one thing the utilities do provide, though, is they do pay into the utility tax for the arterial paving preservation program. So I think the utilities would say they're already providing funding to help support the roadway network in the city.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor of Resolution twenty-three-oh-three-three, approving the Transportation Improvement Plan for the City of Des Moines, raise your right hand. Motion passes seven zero. I will now open the public hearing for the second reading of the draft resolution twenty-three-oh-three relating to the City of Des Moines Housing Action Plan. Staff presentation by Community Development Director Denise Lathrop.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Denise Lathrop, Community Development Director. And I actually don't have any additional information to present tonight. There were amendments that were provided by Deputy Mayor Buxton as Attachment Three to your council packet as an amendment. And then I think this next piece will come as additional comment. The city clerk provided me with some information provided by a citizen that I can speak to when the time is appropriate. Thank you.
And from what I understand, city clerk, we have two people signed up to speak, okay? So it's now time for the public comment. The rules apply as they did in regular public comment. About boisterous threatening or personally abusive while addressing the council will be removed, and you'll have three minutes to speak. And with that, we'll start with Ms. Martha Hamilton.
Hello, Mayor, Council. Thank you. A couple of comments before I get into the little handout that I created. I found on the American Planning Association website that one-third of American households are a single individual. And I can say, the cul-de-sac that I live on, that has eight homes, three of us are single individuals living there. So I was struck by that because I didn't realize there were so many single individual homes. They're saying by 2025, up to eighty-five percent of households will not include children. I was really surprised by that statistic. And that by 2030, one in five Americans will be over sixty-five. So what they're saying is these statistics reflect a demand for smaller homes, lower cost of living, walkable neighborhoods, and aging in place. And they're, they're pointing to the needs of affordability, diversity of housing types, and density. And clearly, that reflects these needs, the affordability, diversity of housing types, and density. types, and density. I copied the article for you for beach reading when you're hanging out down at the marina. But what I want to direct your attention to is the next stapled packet, which starts with the checkmarks from the HAP. And if you go to the second page, it's a page from the May 4th City Council meeting? Yeah, that one. And the yellow circle is around Item 10, which is talking about removing regulatory barriers, parking, cottage cluster housing, ADUs, tiny homes, missing middle, multifamily design standards, and private decks. And that was the May 4th. And then what I found was, the checkmarks look like we're looking at a lot of different types of housing, but when we go to the text, so the next page in the handout, which is the Strategy Three of the Development Code, it defines middle housing as townhomes, duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, and cottage clusters. It looks like what's happened is we've lost the ADUs, and I would also suggest that tiny homes also got dropped off there. And from my perspective, as a citizen who really wants to be part of the solution, I'm not going to build townhomes, duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, or cottage clusters in a traditional cottage housing on my land. What I'm looking for are the ADUs and the tiny homes. So what I'd like to do is to request that we add ADUs and tiny homes as part of the definition of the missing middle housing. And then if you go to the next page, this is from Strategy Four, there are a lot of bullet points there. I'm requesting that we add a bullet point that says, reduce or remove ADU regulatory barriers to foster middle housing, including tiny homes. So I'm making a request that we add some clarifiers. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Hamilton. Moving on to Ms. Gwynn, Ms. Kristy Gwynn.
Hello, thank you. I've been a homeowner in Des Moines for 10 years, lived in Des Moines for 23 years, and I would also like to advocate for the inclusion of ADUs, ALQs, and tiny homes in housing options, just to provide more flexibility. I recognize that ADUs and ALQs are in the current zoning and in the permit planning, building permit planning, so I don't understand why they would be excluded here unless this is going to point to the current planning requirements for ADUs and ALQs. So I would ask the same as Martha, that they be included in that language and expanded to include tiny homes. For myself, it would be a multi-generational use case for housing. I have a 23-year-old and an 80-year-old mother, 23-year-old son and an 80-year-old mother who lives at Huntington Park. So for myself, my land would accommodate both an attached ADU as well as an unattached ADU, if I were to do something like that, or a tiny home, and that would provide flexibility for unknown circumstances, maybe future COVID, aging in place, who knows, but to provide affordable housing that I can sustain on my property as well. And as far as impact to the neighborhoods, we live in Zenith neighborhood, and there's a variety, including condos, single-family homes, now an adult family care home, and the three-story Lego house on the corner of 240th and Marine View Drive, I think there's four of them now. So under 850 square foot ADU, ALQ, or tiny house, I don't think would be an impact negatively to the neighborhood or to the look and feel that we want to try to maintain. So appreciate your consideration of including that language, or at least looking at that as an option. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gwynn. Is there anyone who didn't sign up to speak that wishes to speak? Second time, is there anyone who didn't sign up to speak that wishes to speak? Third and final time, is there anyone who didn't sign up to speak that wishes to speak? Seeing no one else wishing to speak, Council, do you have any questions? Councilmember Harris?
Well, we are going to have a discussion period, that's my first question, after this, because we didn't with the other thing.
After, after the motion, right now is for questions.
Yeah, but I'm, so that's the question. I just, we're going to have a discussion period after.
Yeah, that is the plan, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Pennington.
Just relative to the, the folks that just spoke, does state, the current state law or the state, or the law that was, I think in about 18 or 19, there was a, a change in, in ADU use, does that address their concern relative to, relative to the property use and, and the, the ADUs that they're asking about?
Well, as the one speaker did acknowledge, we do have the ability to permit ADUs or accessory dwelling units in our single-family residential zones. There are some limitations based on lot sizes, setbacks, and that. So the state legislature just adopted or enacted a new ADU bill, so we are going to be going back and looking at our regulations and how we're going to comply with the new state requirements there, so there will be opportunities for us to further refine our regulations, which will, we will be doing, working on that concurrently with our comp plan update.
Mayor, if I may, you know, I think that those suggestions that were made were very thoughtful, and hopefully there's a way, whether it be in this is the mechanism or whatever the mechanism is, to provide opportunities for that kind of development. I think as we've described before, some of those challenges have to do with utilities and infrastructure and all of that, but conceptually, what you're describing, each of you, I think is certainly worth consideration, and not quite sure where the appropriate place for that to occur is, but to come out of it where there could be, you know, regulatory capacity to do that, I, I think that makes sense, so I don't know if Wayne or Denise.
And my only other comment would be, as it related to the recommended edits to the language under Strategy Three, what we've listed wasn't an exhaustive list, it was providing sort of a range, and so we're obviously going to be exploring all types of middle housing and that. There's one other point of clarification. I have a little bit more hesitancy on adding tiny homes because I reached out to the Building Division to talk about that earlier this week, based upon Ms. Hamilton's comments at the last meeting, and if, if they're on wheels, they're regulated more like an RV, and so it would function more like an RV park, and they aren't really considered tiny homes. If it's a tiny home, it's typically, or it is on a foundation, and so, but we will be looking at, again, opportunities for accommodating those smaller type units that are more affordable, and definitely that will be further discussion in our comp plan update.
So I have a question, and I'll go to Council, so is there any need, per se, based on their comments, to change any of the documentation we have today?
I, I would be open to the suggested text edit to Strategy Four on Page 36. I looked at this, was, we could amend the language if council was open to it to say, remove or reduce regulatory barriers to foster middle housing and ADUs. I wouldn't suggest putting the tiny home language, tiny home language in there.
Okay. I think, I had Councilmember Steinmetz, then I'll go to you, Deputy Mayor Buxton.
Denise, I kind of asked you something akin to this last week, so maybe I've got a little better clarity. But at least the middle, the missing middle bill, it came down from the paper just like there, I believe the ADU dealt with lots as their defining entity, but they didn't define what lot necessarily is, other than the existing subclass, or I'm not quite sure what the right word is, to use there. And are any of these contemplating a change in ownership of that, the pieces of that lot, or would the lot still be owned by one owner who then builds additional units on his or her lot?
It would depend on what is being proposed, and so, for example, the townhomes would be independent ownership, and so it would be basically the, the townhomes, say if you have four units, the dividing line between the units are separate, they become separate lots through fee simple ownership. And so I think we are going to be exploring all of those different ramifications, and the state has, basically, we will be looking at the whole range that they've identified in their definition for middle housing and beyond, because the tiny homes don't really fall within the state's definition of middle housing.
And so, as I understand it, and you're saying the definition of a townhome is a fee simple ownership of the area?
Yeah, so if you can think of the 216th Townhome project that the council recently reviewed, each of those townhome units, their driveways, their backyards are independently owned, and so they'll sell as separate, separate units.
And for a condo, it wouldn't necessarily be that, it would be just the interior part of that, but that would also be separately owned.
And then there's the common, common spaces and that.
But for an ADU, either detached or not attached in the yard, that wouldn't necessarily be separately owned?
That's a good question, because that is some of the work that we're going to have to unpack the new ADU bill and really do a thorough analysis of that, and how our regulations comply, and what needs to change, and so that will be something we will be working on over the next year, two year and a half. And maybe Wayne has some clarification, too.
I was just going to say, yeah, and it, it's not just looking at, you know, numeric standards in the zoning code, we're going to be looking at, you know, things like impervious surface coverage, landscaping, there's so many things that kind of collide, that, and that's why, there, there's no real simple answers yet, but, you know, we have, as I think Denise said at the last meeting, until June 30th of 2025, to make sure we have this stuff instituted in the code. And so the, the intent is to do this concurrently with the comprehensive plan, because there, the, if, if you think of the code as just a kind of a web of, you know, subdivision, engineering, landscape, we're going to have to make sure that, you know, if we pull the string in one spot, it doesn't unravel things in another.
Yeah, I mean, I was thinking, you take a normal, you know, quarter acre lot, and then you take 25% of that, put a small ADU on there and sell it. How do you figure out what is the acceptable permeable surface on that, 25%? And do we recognize that that is now a separate piece of property that's essentially been, I think subplot in here, whatever the proper term might be, and I don't necessarily have all of that.
Yeah, and we don't, we don't have that answer right now either, but it will be something that we're, we will look at, and we will take note of your question as well.
Deputy Mayor Buxton, I see you, Councilmember Harris, you'll be next.
I'm, I was a little curious about the question. I think that question may have assumed that we didn't allow ADUs, and they were recommended that we include ADUs in the Housing Action Plan, and I think one of the reasons it's not specifically said is because we already do. And then because the state is basically going to be mandating some of these things, the idea about what we put in the plan has to do with, well, what do we think the state might not mandate, and what are we going to have some influence over? And I think a couple of our amendments that will be, are going to be proposed tonight address that in regard to ADUs. If we wanted to consider lowering barriers, barriers, what, across the board, I, I think that if we do consider that wording, that it would just be a general umbrella statement over the entire, over the entire plan, consider reducing barriers, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, we tend to want to leave the language either as is, or, you know, to give us more options there. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, that, that makes sense. This is supposed to be kind of a, a guidance to, to kind of direct the overall philosophy of the, the exploration of, of housing-related direction from you for the comprehensive plan, and then the concomitant zoning code amendments that would occur.
Okay, sorry, yes, I think in my mind, I'm. Unless, if we want to entertain it, I think it needs to be a broad, such a broad statement, like an umbrella statement, that it might not have impact, so. I'm sorry, that was supposed to be a question. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris?
Thank you. Do we, you know, not to get too finicky, but do we need to make a distinction between DADUs and ADUs in this document? Because it sounds like we're talking about detached, a lot of the concerns here, but they're two very different animals, to my mind.
Well, the way our code currently looks at accessory dwelling units, it could be within the structure or as a separate structure, I don't, I don't believe our code, we don't use the term DADUs, which is, I think Seattle uses that terminology, we just, ours is actually accessory living quarters is how we define it in our code. But we will be, again, looking at, we're going to have to take a deeper dive into our regulations regarding accessory dwelling units and how we comply with the new state law. So things are likely going to change.
I guess the word that I was looking for in this document was more, you know, like encouraging, I mean, because there's an aspirational quality to it, and it's like, okay, what things are we encouraging versus what are we simply gritting our teeth and, you know, saying, oh, okay? And I, I, I've heard from, you know, at, at least a dozen homeowners that they do want to, they want to have some form of detached accessory dwelling unit, and they want to maintain ownership over the dirt.
That's what we currently allow right now?
Yeah, they just want them larger, slightly larger, you know, that's kind of.
Okay, that's good, that's a good point, I mean, we can make note of that.
City Manager Mathias.
Just a, a quick comment, not unlike the direction that Councilmember Harris was going, I'm always shocked, but the, I know, the idea is that, so this is not an authorizing document, this is a guidance document, a planning document, and from this is derived the specifics of how these things are implemented in our code, subject to state regulations, international building code, all of those different aspects go into that. So this is, just remember that this is to serve a conceptual framework of how we move forward, so I just wanted to point that out.
All right. Any other questions? Councilmember Pennington?
So I guess the, the, the timing of, of their request, and the timing of, of the, the, this document, and the timing of the change in the state law, all collided and has kind of thrown, really thrown all this up in, in the air, and, and so we're trying to figure out how we put those pieces back together, is that a, is that a fair statement? Or at, at least interpret what all of those pieces are going to look like in, in, as we go forward, is that a fair, is that a fair question?
Well, I think with regard to the Housing Action Plan, we, this document is based on the Housing Needs Assessment that we already, that we had conducted for our city, and so it identified where we have gaps in certain types of housing and affordability, and so really, it's a strategy of how we fill those gaps, and some of the tools that we're going to be looking at is streamlining our development regulations to facilitate that, and so some of the things that the speakers brought up, as well as other council members, are, are things. are, are things that we were, already had as tools in the toolbox. It's just that we may be adjusting those tools as part of our future review to comply with these state laws that just were passed. So I don't think we're redoing, it's not a backpedal on this plan.
This, yeah, the, the, the Housing Action Plans really are, are kind of commerce's intent towards having communities such as the city of Des Moines kind of begin the, the process of its comprehensive plan a little early, earlier by kind of funding some of that initial housing needs assessment, which can be, take quite a bit of time and quite a bit of money. So that, the idea was that this document that would then kind of roll into the planning associated with the, the housing element of your comprehensive plan. The, the legislation that you've seen passed over the last couple of months really is mostly geared to regulatory changes within your municipal code. And, and obviously, we'll be kind of sorting through that as part of updating the, the, the housing element, as well as the, the balance of the comprehensive plan as part of your 2024 periodic update. So the, the, the legislation's mostly dealing with making sure that, that these types of middle housing units, accessory dwelling units are allowed. And, but, but, but that's in, in the regulations. So, so that, this is really kind of the, for lack of a better term, kind of the science, the economics, the demographics to support your housing element that you're going to be embarking upon.
So I guess my next question would be, so this is the, the 2024 plan, it, like I said, I have a couple of questions. Is, is there, refresh my memory, is there a specific time that this plan is due?
The Housing Action Plan, we need to adopt by June 15th of this year.
Okay.
And so it's something we've been working on.
My next question was, is could we put a pin in this and tell, we unpacked what the state has, has passed, but I know the answer to that now. So thank you for your time.
But one of the things I would say, obviously, we would, if, if, if there's a need to update the document based on the state legislation as you interpret it and get it all figured out and unpack it, as you say, we'd have that opportunity. But the key is to get the base document done now and then move forward and adjust to the changes, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Councilmember Harris.
I really do not want to vote for this, but, you know, there's the, that's no reflection on you or...
Is this a question, sir? We're in the question portion.
That's all I got for the discussion period. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any more questions from the council? Councilmember Oxger.
Yes, well, you indicated that you would not have any problems with the proposed changes to Strategy, I believe it was four. Is that something we can do now, or do we want to wait for all of the rest of this on a plan revision?
You know, it was just more if, if council was interested in entertaining that, I had some suggested wording that I could actually hand it to the city clerk and/or to somebody if they, if they were open to it. But I don't think it really is going to necessarily change the intent of what we were planning to do with that initial bullet, which was really focusing on removing regulatory barriers to foster middle housing.
City Manager Mathias.
Yeah, no, I mean, I would say that if, you know, council wants to reiterate what I think's in the document, or is allowable within the document as a recommendation for the housing element as ultimately a comp plan, that's, that's fine. I mean, I think that the intent is in there. If, if council wants to be a little more specific as to intent, I think that's fine.
All right. Council, Councilman Steinmetz.
Yeah, just, just real briefly, my understanding, having listened to the question and answer back and forth, which I appreciate you standing up there and taking the curveballs, is that nothing in this excludes any particular kind of dwelling that might be built on a lot in order to meet some of the needs that we, that have been identified in the housing needs. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think my only clarification would be my comment about the tiny homes and homes on wheels. I mean, that is just something we would have to do a little bit deeper dive on, but for my understanding from speaking with our building officials, is that those structures would need to be on a permanent foundation, and that they don't acknowledge tiny homes. Homes on wheels are not considered tiny, tiny homes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none. I will now close the public hearing. Is there a motion? Deputy Mayor Buxton.
I move to enact draft resolution 23-030, adopting the city of Des Moines Housing Action Plan.
Do I have a second? Councilmember Nutting has seconded. Discussion. Council, Deputy Mayor Buxton.
So after the meeting last week, I forwarded a set of recommended amendments to each member of the council. So one amendment per page, and so I, those are my recommendations, and I guess my question would be, does anybody have any objections or?
I'll interject. I think just, I'm fine with your, your suggestions, and we, we put those in as, as you worded them. But let's just add, as Ms. Lathrop had defined, that we just add ADU in the language in what she recommended.
There, amendment number five addresses ADUs.
But she had the language that she thought we could add that, that, just that simple word into...
Strategy four.
In Strategy four, yes. Thank you.
Okay. Action, Strategy four, right there. So I have my recommendations under Strategy four, and so we wanted to, Strategy, my recommendations acknowledge that ADUs are already permitted.
Then it's already in your, your recommended changes, so I'm fine with that. So I just want to make sure it was there. Councilmember Pennington.
It looks like...
I, I'd just, I'd like to hear from Denise if, if these two are compatible or not.
I just wanted to clarify that the proposed amendment by Ms. Hamilton was on page 36 of the draft hap, and it was add, recommended adding a bullet under Strategy four.
Can you go up to 10 pages?
I think she might not have the full document there. In the document, let's see, 36, what page is it here? That's 11.
You have it here.
So for, for councils, pardon me?
It's page 119 in the packet.
It's the implementation actions under Strategy four. Unfortunately, my council packet didn't print the numbers that appear on the full...
Yeah, it's 119.
Okay.
At the top of page 119.
Yeah. And so the way I was reading this bullet, opposed to what, different from what Ms. Hamilton had proposed, I was suggesting the language read, remove or reduce regulatory barriers to foster middle housing and ADUs.
And that would be a...
A new bullet.
Amendment of, of bullet number one.
Which would be a new bullet.
It would just be, because it almost says the same thing in bullet number one.
So your motion, if it's a friendly amendment, would be to consider your four...
And that one.
And that one, as the five changes to the document before we take a vote.
Fine with me. If it's, it's fine with me.
Do I have a second for that? I see Councilmember Nutting. Councilmember Harris, go ahead.
Yeah, so Deputy Mayor Buxton, where are your amendments? You had a couple of lines concerning skip, and could you point out where they're at?
It would be probably on, you'd have to scroll down. That's the last page. So that's amendment number, recommended number five, so probably number three or four talks about skip.
There it is.
Okay, so... And you have to scroll to see the actual recommendation. That's my why. So you have to scroll a little bit further. Yeah. Right there.
So why do you feel it necessary to include skip in, in this?
Skip was already included in that, and so my amendment actually recommend, continue, my recommend is to take the words skip out, continue to expand partnerships, all partnerships in providing housing programs and services to our residents, such as, because skip does not provide housing programs. And, and so it was, it's a little bit of a, it could be a misleading statement. It's not that it, so anyway, I wanted to clarify and make it a, more of an umbrella statement, not just skip, but all partners.
Thank you.
Any more discussion before we take a vote? Councilmember Steinmetz.
Yeah, I, I think the amendments are actually far more inclusive, and I think that's a good thing, particularly in a planning document or an aspirational document such as this. And so I, I would endorse the amendments to it, and I intend to vote for it as amended.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion, including the amendments by Deputy Mayor Buxton, and I can say it that way, correct?
We're just voting on including the amendments.
Oh, just, we're just going to vote on the amendments? Okay, all five amendments, as stated, all those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye. Motion passes seven zero, and then we'll be moving, we'll be voting on the motion itself, correct?
The motion to pass.
Yes. So we have a motion on the floor, and we already had that motion on the floor. Any discussion on this before I take a vote? Seeing none. So the motion would be to move enact the draft resolution as amended for 23030, adopting the city of Des Moines Housing Action Plan. All those in favor, raise your right hand. I see Councilmember Pennington, Councilmember Steinmetz, Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Nutting, Councilmember Oxger, and myself, all those opposed. Councilmember Harris, motion passes six one. Counsel, before we begin the issuance of the bonds and the review of the council rules, I'm going to say we take a five-minute break. Now, do I have a, we're going to do that, one of the things I recommend is that you all turn off your mics, because there'll be a live feed left on with that. We'll be back at 8:52. 7:52 for the record. Yeah. All right, if we could get the council back to the desk, please. All right, thank you. So now we'll be moving on to old business. Um, the City Council's approval for issuance of the bonds, twenty-six million, million dollars for the Marina and Redondo Development. Uh, staff presentation by City Manager Michael Mathias. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I need to, um, back up a little bit in the meeting to the city manager's report and, uh, acknowledge a mistake that I made. And sometimes you have people around you that are so valuable, they just become part of the equation and you forget to mention them. But there's no way I could forget to mention, um, absolutely one of the most stellar people that is associated with this city, and that's our city attorney, Tim, Tim George. And I forgot to mention that he was the only person that was in multiple interviews with our police chief candidates. So totally appreciate Tim's input. And I always, I always do, and I apologize for, for not mentioning that earlier. Anyways, moving on to the bonds. So we're just gonna walk through, we, we added a couple of, um, pieces of information to help clarify based on the discussion last week. And essentially, as we walk through this, um, you know, we're able to do this because we're financially solvent. We're able to do this because we have been assigned a very high bond rating, second highest possible. We want to reiterate that no property tax proceeds will be used for debt payments. Next. These are the projects that, um, Jeff will walk through these in a minute, a little more specifically, but this is information you've already seen. These are the projects, this Marina dock replacement, steps in the plaza, fishing pier and restroom at Redondo, parking systems integrated for Redondo and the Marina, and the flag, flag triangle enhancements. Once again, our debt capacity, we are currently at seven percent of the total debt capacity in the city, which is almost unbelievable. The challenge for the city has not been the debt capacity, meaning the amount of debt we can acquire, it's been our ability to pay the debt service. That's the constraint. The proposed, uh, bond, the twenty-six million, represents twenty-six percent of our debt capacity. Those two, what's currently in place for some improvements at the Marina with some, some bonds we refinanced in twenty eighteen. Um, and then this, uh, proposed bond, uh, for recommended approval by the council brings our total debt service up to about thirty-three percent. We have neighbors, neighboring cities who are at a hundred percent. We're still even within this new issuance, um, within a very reasonable, conservative amount of debt for the city. Next, please. Bond process, just a couple of points. Bond, um, ordinance authorizes the city to issue bonds by twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-four. They can only be issued for the projects included in the ordinance, which are the five projects that, um, Jeff will talk about a little more in detail. Underwriting, and this is important, the bond underwriter assesses the bond market conditions to recommend timing and pricing of the bond sale. That's what we rely on them for. But bond issuance is also subject to project readiness. So we don't want to, and one of the concerns is always that you're, you know, you issued the bond, now you're holding the money, you put it in a bank or wherever, and start drawing interest, and the feds don't like that. So you have to issue the bonds relatively close to when you start drawing down for the projects. Bond counsel provides a legal opinion delivered with the bonds. As I just mentioned, the federal regulations, they wanted to see the spend down of proceeds. They are not collecting tax on the bonds, that's the, the, the one inherent value of municipal bonds, they're, they're not, they're tax-free. And the interest, yeah, is exempt from federal taxes, right? Next one, please. So this was just something else to clarify. The two issues from last week, we wanted to clarify, just mentioned one of them, that the timing of the issuance and the restriction on the bonds for the projects identified. And secondly, we just want to enhance this slide just to show that of the fourteen million dollars that will be used for the dock replacements, that will be financed by Marina funds. That is not residents of the city unless they happen to have mortgage at the Marina. And then they're engaged in the, in, um, their relationship with the business of the Marina, Marina's Enterprise Fund, meaning that its expenditures have to be paid for by revenues that they, um, receive primarily storage sheds, mortgage, and fuel sales. The other projects, the other eleven million dollars of projects are gonna be financed, the debt service through the, the real estate excise tax, which you saw earlier under the, the close of twenty twenty-two. One-time sales tax, and just to clarify, one-time sales tax means it's comprised of sales tax on construction materials for projects valued at over fifteen million dollars. This is not day-to-day sales tax. You don't, will not go into a store and there'll be an additional sales tax. That is not what this means. This means that large-scale developers, Wesley's putting two-hundred-and-fifty-million dollars into their campus, their construction materials will be taxed and that will go to one-time sales tax, primarily used for capital projects, and in this case, the, the financing of capital projects. And then the other thing that we're counting on will be future parking revenue, and based on a, a relatively dysfunctional system, um, that will, uh, revenue should be strong if we get a good system. And Scott, I know, is involved in, in looking at those right now to determine how we can go about that. And I believe that's, yeah, project partners, once again, State of Washington Legislative Appropriations. So we've been very blessed by the support of our, our legislative delegations, thirtieth, thirty-third, Senator Kaiser has been instrumental, Representative Orwell, um, Senator Wilson, Representative Reeves, and, uh, Jamila, and also, uh, Mia Gregerson has, has all been supportive of what we're trying to do. We also received money from the Department of Commerce grant, and we're able to utilize the American Rescue Plan Act. And that money allows us to, um, by issuing the bond, it frees up money for other things that we want to invest in, like parks and playgrounds and equipment and all that kind of thing. So there's a, a great symmetry here in the resources available at this moment in time, which has not been a moment in time in the past and moving forward. And now, Jeff, you want to just walk through this?
Yeah, so as mentioned, these are the same projects as we saw, uh, la, during the last meeting. Uh, so I'll review the, uh, funding structure, which would be found in the last column, uh, under total budget, uh, on the bottom half of the screen. Uh, so this is, uh, the Marina Dock Replacement. Um, and these are also, these numbers are in thousands, so that sixteen hundred is one-point-six million of Marina funds, and then the bond proceeds would be twelve-point-seven-four million. Uh, the Marina Steps, uh, ARPA funds would provide one-point-one-five-one million. Uh, we have a Washington State appropriation, uh, which we'd re, receive nine-hundred-and-eighty-thousand, and then bond debt proceeds would be a little over seven-point-eight million. Uh, the Redondo Fishing Pier, I have several funding sources. Uh, REIT two, uh, would be eight-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand, that's real estate excise tax. Uh, the Department of Commerce grant, uh, two-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand. Uh, the other Washington State appropriation from the legislature, which is nine-hundred-and-eighty-thousand, and then bond, uh, proceeds of a little over one-point-nine million. The Redondo Restroom, uh, would have, uh, again, a REIT two for a hundred thousand and, uh, bond proceeds of about one-point-seven million. A Redondo Paid Parking would use that one-time sales tax for twenty-five thousand, and then bond proceeds of three-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand. The Marina Beach Paid Parking would use, uh, bond proceeds of three-hundred-and-sixty-thousand. And then, uh, finally, the Flag Triangle would use a hundred-and-sixty-three thousand of ARPA and, uh, bond proceeds of a hundred-and-eleven thousand.
Thank you. Go ahead, does that, is that all you have?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Councilmember Nutty?
I moved to, excuse me, I moved, I moved to pass draft ordinance number two-three-zero-two-two, providing for the issuance, sales, and delivery of not to exceed twenty-six million of...
Limited, sorry.
Limited tax general obligation bonds for the purpose of constructing public amenities and capital improvements.
Second? I have a second from, uh, Councilmember Pennington. Discussion before I take a vote. Councilmember Harris?
So, uh, right, um, do you have an estimate as to what the, uh, debt payments will look like five or ten years from now?
I would say that, um, our underwriter has provided some estimates of what the debt service could look like. Uh, we don't know what the final number would be, but we do, I'd say we have a rough estimate, yes, they would be the same every year for thirty years.
Okay.
So are you asking what the number is?
Yes, please.
Um, well, I'd say they would be roughly, let me do the numbers in my head. Probably on the, um, not including the docks, would be around between six and seven-hundred-thousand. And the docks themselves would be close to seven-hundred-thousand as well.
Okay, so speaking hypothetically, we get to twenty thirty-four and we want to go to phase two, and we're doing the seawall, um, and, uh, and we're doing the rest of the docks, and me doing my back of the cocktail napkin, that seems like an equal amount of money. So, um, any thoughts on where our debt load, like we're, we're gonna go to thirty-three now, which is sort of, uh, the city manager says is irrelevant, it's based, it's, what matters is your ability to pay the debt service. I guess this is, I guess my concern is basically you're gonna have to borrow another twenty-six million in, you know, ten years, and then you're gonna have that existing debt, uh, debt service to pay on. And, um, do you feel sanguine about that? I, I would assume, yes, but, uh, yeah.
Well, Councilmember Jeff will be the only one of us that's still here at that point. But, but I think.
That's exactly the point, yeah.
A couple of, um, a couple of items, but, I mean, one thing, you know, there's, they're in, these are callable bonds, I think, after ten years, and/or we could refinance them. So, conditions in the market can dictate changes. We were able to refinance the two thousand and eight bonds in twenty eighteen at a much lower rate than what we had originally paid for them. And, um, so there, there are a lot of factors that affect that, but I think that the main thing that you can take away from this, if I, you know, if I wanted to be comforted by something, is that the city has not pushed the issue of debt. And now we have an opportunity to accomplish some really outstanding projects for the community, for the Marina, for, for development, for mobility and access and all of that. But we have done this very carefully relative to what is the capacity of the city to undertake this. And certainly in the future, I hope that a future council and a future administration would be bound by that same obligation. So if the money wasn't there to pay back the debt, we would not issue the debt.
Right, so, um, this is not a question, but this is actually a motion. I will move to, uh, omit elements two-three-four-B and five from this bond sale, meaning the steps, paid parking, restroom, and flag triangle, and proceed with the dock replacement and the Redondo Fishing Pier. Yeah.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it for purposes of discussion.
Okay. Discussion?
Well, I would just.
Councilmember Harris?
I would just suggest that, um, the two projects I mentioned going forward, they are well-understood, they're permitted, they are things that we absolutely have to do. The Marina must be, uh, kept updated. We literally have no choice, and, you know, the same thing with the fishing pier. The other projects are less well-understood, the public, uh, has not seen drawings on them. And, um, I, even things like the parking, um, I completely understand the urgency, you know, it's like, we gotta do something, but I would just remind people that the reason we're in this pickle with the, uh, current parking system is because, and I was, you know, you pass the thing, and then as soon as it gets in, and immediately flaws were discovered, like within a week, okay? But people are like, oh, no, no, don't take them out, you know, I mean, we like the added security, so then you have to eat it for years. And so my thing is always to residents, please just have some patience. Bring forward the brochure, just give the council and the public that, uh, sense of like, oh, okay, this thing is really gonna work, and, you know, if it takes an extra month, it'll take an extra month, and then you know you've got a product that'll be, uh, good for the next ten years, rather than, you know, having buyer's remorse yet again. It's worth that time. And I would have said that regarding things like the speed cameras or anything else. It's just worth it to just take a breath. I understand how much people are, you know, like, but it's that sense of constant, we gotta do something now, that makes us make poor decisions. Let's just only vote on what we understand and, uh, you know, is, uh, we have to do now, and then take a look at the drawings and, um, and then, uh, vote for it, because the thing is, we actually do have until the end of twenty twenty-four, and there is no, that any kind of urgency here is basically self-imposed. It's like the thing where, you know, you gotta leave, you gotta buy it now before you leave the store, it's a limited time offer. No, it's not. So, please, I hope we can just do the things we need to do now, and then, um, you know, maybe in a week or a month, when we have the, uh, bids come in on each item, um, vote on those individually. Thank you.
Anybody else? Councilmember Oxger?
Can you tell me what the build-out estimate is on Wesley? How many years? I believe somewhere I heard it was twenty twenty-six they should be completed.
I do not know. Maybe our building department knows. I'm not sure how that's relevant.
Well, if the one-time, uh, sales tax money is no longer available, I mean, are we anticipating some other projects that will pick up that amount of money that's, uh, estimated to go towards the bond, uh, retirement?
One, one-time sales through, through the build, development, like boom, I think that this community has seen, the Business Park being an example, a hundred-million-dollar FAA building, the fact that the port is developing more Business Park to the west of the current Business Park, that will be significant projects, ongoing projects, um, yes, we anticipate that there continues to be large projects in this city.
Okay, and the other question is, um, in section six, there's a pledge of taxes, and I know that we've said that, uh, I think what, what we're saying is that the intention is that it not be, uh, uh, sales ta, or I mean, uh, property taxes used for this, but with the pledge of taxes in here, does that mean that if we are underestimating the other revenues and stuff, that we may have to switch over and pay for it with, uh, property taxes?
I think what the, that, what that means essentially is that the full faith and credit of the city is behind these bond, um, payments. And I think that what's very insightful is that the private market has designated this city as very credit-worthy. So we do not anticipate problems that would come, any demands from anywhere, um, but, you know, the idea is that they will be paid for by the sources that we've identified. But, you know, the idea is that they will be paid for by the sources that we've identified.
Councilman Pennington.
Thank you, Mayor. So whenever we issue bonds, there's a fee associated with that, is that correct? So, a, and how much is that fee, is it a percentage of the bond or?
Well, it varies, but what was recommendation of our, the underwriter and our bond counsel, there's $900,000 in there for the issuance of bonds, which is in all likelihood a high, high-end number. So it's probably be less than that, and that would be charged to, to the city at the issuance of the bonds.
So, it's, what, let's just say maybe 750,000. So every time you issue a set of bonds, you have a bond fee that can be anywhere from, depending on, on the, the cost of the bond, a half a million to 900,000 dollars, or, you know, 500 to 900,000 dollars. So if you take the approach of, we'll issue some next month, and we'll issue some next month, and we'll issue some next month, we're going to end up paying a great fee in, in issuing bonds. Secondly, a part of the REIT money, and, and, and I don't recall, but as the, the developments up there and the warehouses get sold, because they change on a pretty regular basis, what was, what was the, the real estate excise tax that we got from the last sale?
What I'm aware of, there were two transactions, phase one and phase two, which are those, the buildings along 208, and then going south encompassing where Partners Crackers is and AmerisourceBergen, that middle section, and then the section furthest to the north of the city where K2 Skis is and some others. And those two were, those two properties were sold by Panatoni and they did not include the land. This is strictly the buildings and the leases. And we got in the neighborhood of, hmm, was, it was, it was like about half a million dollars or so. Yeah, just from those two transactions.
I'd add also, and concerns with REIT, when looking at the forecast for the years going ahead, and the historical trend has been growth, but we didn't want to presume that that growth was always going to continue year to year. So our, our forecast, we really kind of flatlined that. So we didn't assume that we're going to be getting money that we're probably, you know, who knows if we're going to get that or not. So we, we took a very conservative approach as far as looking at future revenues.
And, and I, and, and I won't speak for, but I, I, Councilmember Nutting, is, we had the same experience a few years ago. And, and if I didn't have the confidence that the city was in a financial position and, and because of, of, like I stated earlier in the meeting, the due diligence, the, the hard work by the staff, the, the importance of, of making sure that our city is sustainable for, not just sustainable for a little while, but for the long term. And, and there were a lot of late nights with negotiations that the, that the mayor and myself, as the deputy at that time, and the city manager, and, and a lot of work and, and with labor groups and other business, other community partners in terms of, of utility districts, there's a tremendous amount of work that went into ensuring that the city was, had the long-term stability. And the city was able to do things like this in the future. Because the alternative was, is that this city would be divided up most likely between Federal Way, Normandy Park, Kent, Sea-Tac and Burian. And we were seven, $650,000 away from that. And, and what, what it cost me personally was a lot because of the stress associated with that change. And if I didn't feel confident in our staff and where we are today, there would be no way in heck I would ever support this. No way. But I do feel confident, and I do feel confident in, in the future of where we're going. Thank you.
Councilor Steinmetz, and then I see you, Deputy Mayor Buxton.
Yeah, I want to speak against this amendment, because this is just the height of financial craziness. Not only has the point been made that when you do five projects under one bonding issuance, you only have one bond fee. If you were to do one, well, in this case, I think he's suggesting probably about four different bond issuances, which would require four different fees, you also have to pay the lawyer every single time. And while, you know, that's near and dear to my heart, that's not a way to run a city, you know? It's the, it, it's the same idea that we try to do with the paving the roads at the same time as the, the utility companies are doing some work. You've got to do things together in order to make it more cost-effective. And so this would just be an absolutely financially foolish approach to do this. Secondly, is as was explained last week, the design aspects of, in particular, the Marina steps, which seems to be the constant desire to delay, 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 delay and never get to, is wholly separate from the bonding capacity. And that's what we're dealing with right now, is simply the capacity to do the bonds while we're working on that design option. If it doesn't work out, we don't issue, we don't sell the debt and it never cost us that. And as a consequence, that's not the way big finance, big projects get financed. And so, you know, I, I just think this is not a very smart idea. I think it was put together in its original package as a way to make it an efficient way to issue these bonds and to get the capacity that we need so that we can move forward with a number of projects. So I would urge everyone to vote against this amendment, just from a purely financial perspective.
Deputy Mayor Buxton.
I'm good, he did, he did vote.
Councilmember Harris, your second time.
Going back to, you know, about 300 years ago, so we made about 500 grand more this year at the Marina than last year. How come?
So going back to that question, I think what you need to do is look at the difference between operations and capital. So if you were looking at the actual operations and the money that was made, it was actually 1.6 million. Then after that 1.6, there was debt payments and capital work and that resulted in the 500,000. So why did they make, make money is people went and paid for mortgage and they ran an efficient enterprise fund.
That's great, so, I mean, do you expect it to, you know, maintain that level in the next year?
Well, part of the analysis was looking at the Marina's cash flow and the amount of cash that they generated. And if you invest in the Marina and it's a place someone, you know, people want to go to, people want to use, then yes, I would expect it to at least maintain the amount of cash flow that it has the last few years.
Thank you.
Especially looking at the pandemic years as well, and the increase since then.
Thank you.
I, I won't support the motion either. This is a grand day. As long as I've been involved in city council meetings, this has been part of the end goal in the discussion, is to get to this point, to finally fund and start getting this work done instead of talk about it. Our city has had that history where we continually talk and push out. And our waterfronts need the care, attention that this provides. It's a must, and we've done, as, as Councilmember Pennington had talked about, former council members, no longer here, as well as a couple that are on, worked so hard to get to this point. It would be a tragedy to, to not go forward with it. With that, seeing none, we will take a vote on the motion that council, that Councilmember Harris had, which was to take out the steps, the, the triangle and the parking from the, from the bonding. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. I see Councilmember Harris, I see Councilmember Oxegar. All those opposed? I see Councilmember Pennington, Councilmember Steinmetz, Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Nutting and myself. The motion fails 2-5. We have the original motion on the table. Is there any discussion before I take a vote? Deputy Mayor Buxton, and then I see you, Councilmember Harris.
Just summary statements and comments. Similar to last week, this, this movement tonight, this action tonight, gives us permission to take money as Councilmember Steinmetz, so, well-stated. We only take it when we're shovel-ready, we have 18 months to take it, we have plenty of outreach first. Most citizens, as was, as was explained, most citizens in the city will not pay for these projects. Then it's the next phase of growth and vibrancy in our city. After two decades of talking, we get to give this message out to the region. And it assures that potential partners, investors and our businesses, that we're serious about economic strength. I made a lot of promises as I knocked on about 3,000 doors to advocate to create a destination community here. These thing, this is a gift, these, this package, it's a gift to our citizens that most of them don't have to pay for. This is a decision that we were elected to make, it's a decision I, I, I was elected to make and I'm, I'm excited to make it. Thank you.
Council, Councilmember Harris.
I can't see very well, but the one person in this room who would know, this, this is the opposite of planning. The purpose of Marina redevelopment, which was kind of instigated by the DMMA, I vividly remember the city saying over and over again, the land side must pay for the water side. And the idea being that the Marina would pay for itself and become this magnet and increase revenue. And this is exactly the opposite of that. It is neither fish nor fowl, it will not improve boating, it will not drive people to the city and increase revenues. It's just, it's, it's a lot of debt. And most of it, we are paying for sight unseen. And that alone, you should not want. My experience is that, well, first of all, I'm not sure there's a clear understanding of how bonds work, but that's another thing. The other thing is just that we should, the plan, if you looked at the designs of the Marina and the goals, and they've, they have drifted so far. If you look at whatever little drawings there were and presentations and everything, they're complete, they're like so far away from where we were in 2017. And if your goals change literally every year, within a five-year span, it means there is no such thing as planning, which tells me that five years and 10 years are completely untrustworthy. You should have no trust that this direction will persist five and 10 years down the road, because it's literally changed every year. Just go and look at the drawings at every, you know, every presentation. The goal, what the Marina is supposed to do. And if nothing else, I would just always encourage the public, why I always talk about a planning commission, is you should be able to see what you're buying before you pay for it. Thank you.
If you don't mind, I'd like to go first, then Councilmember Steinmetz. I couldn't completely disagree with you more, I know that's a shocker. But it is going to enhance boating in Des Moines. It's going to become an economic driver to our community, it already has shown signs of that. One of the things that's not mentioned is going to become some great places. Remember, this is both Redondo and the Marina. It's going to bring great accommodations, amenities to the community here. And that's going to bring additional investment and development that gives us the density, gives us the restaurants, the chance at a grocery store and all of these other things. I know this because 20 some years ago, to almost 30, I worked for Crystal Mountain. And we did a 25-year plan, we did a comprehensive plan, a lot of the things weren't laid out yet. But Crystal Mountain, what's happening today, the gondola, the lodges being built, the Upper Mountain Lodge, they have so many skiers now, and we used to beg for days. They have so many skiers, they have to take reservations. These are the kinds of moves, in my past experience, that I have seen and in my business experiences, that will definitely bring the results. We've tried the other stuff and it hasn't worked, we look like 1962. This is going to change Des Moines for the better. And maybe some of us won't see some of the benefits, but we know in our hearts, and they may never know who we are, that we made this a better place to be than it was when we left it. Thank you, it's Councilmember Steinmetz.
I'm really kind of shocked to hear anybody complaining about an evolution of the concept, the more we got input from people. And yet now the complaint is, it's changing, therefore it can't be good planning. No, that's what the planning process is all about. And it has changed, certainly it has, because we've listened to the people that attended the hearings, the people that, you know, wrote us incessantly about the hotel on the, out in the parking lot. You know, those things went away. You know, it is a process and a process necessarily has changed. What eventually gets built is the same concept that we've started with. And that concept is that when you come into the city of Des Moines via the water side, there is a distinctive staircase essentially, it may be switched backs, it may not be stairs, but that's not the point. It's distinctive, it actually creates a situation that you go, hey, that looks really good. That's what the city of Des Moines gets out of it, that's what everybody gets, that's what we want. That is what we have heard every single time public input has been sought. Now, when I ran, gosh, first time was about six years ago, last time was about a year and a half ago. You know, I ran on the idea that we need to bring Des Moines into the 21st century. We need to modernize it, we need to get rid of this 1962 look that we have, and we need to move it forward. There has been lots of input on this and there will be more input on this. You don't need another layer of bureaucracy or a planning council in order, trying to make a decision that ultimately gets ratified by the, your city council. You know, that's all a planning commission does, is it makes recommendations to, to the city council. This is not going to accomplish anything that we don't already have. We need a distinctive look to Des Moines. And at one point in time, somebody brought out the, the view coming up the St. Charles River to Detroit and the beautiful gleaming steel buildings. Now, nobody was ever really suggesting that Des Moines should have gleaming steel buildings with glass and things, but it's very distinctive, you look at that and you go, wow, that's, that's an active place. It looks good and it helped rebuild Detroit. And that's what we're doing here, is we're coming up with the concept. That's been it, the concept all along, that hasn't changed. And so this is what's really important and this is what we're finally moving forward to do tonight, after years of talking about it. And so I'm glad to see it happening and I urge you to support the issuance of the bonds.
Deputy Mayor Buxton, I mean, Councilmember Nutting, I thought you were raising your hand there first.
What so much you like?
I don't look as cute as her.
Yeah, yeah.
My only comments are, is, you know, for as long as I've been up here, I am excited that the city is at a point where we could issue these bonds to move the city forward. It's, it's going to be development driver, it's going to be a driver for development in the downtown core. It is, it will bring people here and I'm, I'm just excited that we can do this.
Councilmember Oxegar.
I have to agree with, you know, the speakers that we've had here, particularly from Marina District, that are confused as to exactly what we're doing. This has changed, I mean, just recently, we've had, okay, we were going to have a hotel in parcel A and then suddenly it went out into the middle of the north parking lot. And so then that was, you know, we, we decided, okay, that's not going to happen. But then we're still going to put the steps forward and then just, you know, recently, it was, okay, but the steps are going to migrate into parcel A. It's, the, the people from the Marina District have been asking for a long time to have some voice- time to have some voice, some way of being confident that we have a plan, that we're going forward. And every other city has a planning commission. I still don't understand why we don't feel that we have to have a planning commission, and the people here on the dais are the end-all-to-be-all on figuring out what we're going to do. So, I think there's nothing wrong in delaying a little bit in order to find out exactly, to get some clarity on exactly where we're going. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, we'll take a motion. We'll take a vote on the motion. The motion is to pass draft ordinance number 23022, providing for the issuance, sale, and delivery of not to exceed 26 million of limited tax general obligation bonds for the purpose of constructing public amenities and capital improvements. All those in favor, raise your right hand. I see Councilmember Pennington, Councilmember Steinmetz, Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Nutting, and myself. All those opposed, I see Councilmember Harris and Councilmember Oxiger. Motion passes 5-2. All right. Councilmember Nutting.
I move to direct staff to bring the council and projects identified in the bond not yet accounted for in the capital improvement plan for inclusion in the CIP.
Do I have a second? Who seconded it? Okay, seconded by Councilmember Pennington. Any discussion? Councilmember Harris.
I would note that most of the people remaining are over the age of, I try to, it's an old joke, but AARP, and it's a kind way of saying that we're screwing the future. You're putting all of this debt load onto the future people in order to basically satisfy this immediate thing, and we should do a better job of considering their needs. But the problem with the local government is that it is all about now and literally my street, and people just don't care about ten or twenty years from now. You take the one-time money from something like the Des Moines Creek Business Park, and maybe that pays one year of bonds. And then, you've got 29 more. And then, you have to live with the fact that that business park doesn't generate revenue for the city. And, okay, but I feel we should do better for the rest of the city. This is all money that will not go for the needs, wants, and desires that are just as legit for the other 25,000 people who do not live near the water. We spend so much energy on the few people lucky enough to live near the water, and very little energy on the rest of the people here who live, you know, yeah, we should do better for them. Thank you.
When I go down to the waterfront, and I do often, it's a myriad of our complex diversity in our community. We're not screwing the future. We're investing in it. Is there any other comments before I take a vote? All right. The Second Amendment, the motion to direct staff to bring to the council any projects identified in the bond and not yet accounted for in the capital improvement project or the CIP, as noted, for inclusion in the CIP. All those in favor, raise your right hand. I see Councilmember Pennington, Councilmember Steinmetz, Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Nutting, and myself. All those opposed, Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Oxiger. Motion passes 5-2. All right, counsel, before we begin the next one, because we're 22 minutes, I suspect, from reaching where we'd have to make an extension, we can do one of two things. We can continue this and maybe forego board and committee reports and try to complete this, or we can do board and committee reports and bring this reading to the June 22 meeting. But I don't see time for both. Recommendations? Go with Councilmember Harris and then Councilmember Nutting.
I would move this item to our next meeting. I think that is a very wise suggestion.
So, let's go to Councilmember Nutting. What is your suggestion, sir?
I move that we work through this and get it off the work plan.
Okay. We have two, yeah, as we're looking at alternative motions, but we need to discuss this before we go to motions. Councilmember Steinmetz.
I really have no idea how big the agenda is for our next meeting, because I think that's a relevant consideration.
The only thing that I have on the agenda that I'm aware of right now is that we would have the executive session for the mid-year review for the city manager.
So, you think we would have?
Is there additional things that you guys could inform me about that's on the futures? They're checking right now. And I apologize. I think it's important we have this discussion, because if we're going to go for completing the rules, then... We have a city manager's report and the executive session review.
Two more items on consent that aren't on there yet.
Okay, and two items on consent would be on consent. All right. It's a pretty light agenda. So, let's, all those in favor of... What? Okay, so, we've got two, thank you, two motions. Who wants to second? Councilmember Harris's, which was to move the council rule reading to the June 22 meeting. And that, so, you second that. All right, but let's have, I want to do the other motion, too. I can't. I'm sorry. Yeah, it's been a long night. Sorry, I apologize. All those in favor of moving that to the June 22 meeting, raise your right hand. Say aye. Okay, I have three members. All those opposed? Okay, all right. Motion fails three, four. All those that, so, would your motion be that we do the council rules and forego the committee assignments?
Correct, Mayor.
Okay, do I have a second? Okay, see a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. I see Councilmember Pennington, Councilmember Steinmetz, Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Nutting, and myself. All those opposed, Councilmember Harris and Councilmember Oxiger. So, we will go with the first reading, or the second reading of the council rules, and we will not have board and committee reports. And do we want to move for an extension now and sharply at 9:30?
I actually make a motion that we continue until we are done with the protocols, that we don't necessarily put a deadline on it.
Do we need a deadline?
If we're going to do this, let's get it done and get it off the work.
Well, no, I mean, you can just keep extending it.
Okay. So, I'll have to interrupt us when we get to five minutes to nine for an extension, no matter where we are. Correct? Is that okay? All right.
I accept the friendly.
I recommend we extend it to 9:30.
At this juncture?
At this juncture.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'd accept that.
All those in favor, I see Councilmember Pennington, Councilmember Steinmetz, Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Nutting, and myself. All those opposed, Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Oxiger. All right, the meeting is extended to 9:30, and when we left off, we were at 7.05. So, with that, if you could bring that document up, as we were doing last time when we began the process. 7 dash or dot 05.
You have something different, because my pack is 356 pages.
Yeah, it's not the whole pack.
Yeah, keep going. It's...
That's page, she's on the packet. She's on 250.
7 dot 05. All right, yes. All right. When we left off, I believe we were in a point of discussion, so we're going to open it back up to 7:05. And I believe Councilmember Harris had brought the initial concern with this chapter and space. Would he like to start?
I'll ask him, Mayor. Thank you. So, paragraph two, "Any criticism of staff by council members shall be directed to the city manager. It is inappropriate and unethical for council members to publicly criticize individual staff members." I actually, I have no problem with that, per se, but I guess I would, if there is any room for discussion, my concern is that one must have the capacity to say, you know, "I'm not thrilled with the Department of whatever on a particular issue," and that should be acceptable. You should be able to critique policy by a department and not, you know, have basically, you know, be that be considered, "Well, you're obviously picking on such and such a person." No, you're concerned about a policy. So, I would like to strike that second sentence, you know, yeah, because I just, I don't see people, I can't recall anyone on this dais, you know, doing this, and so, why do you need language for something that doesn't happen? So, that, yeah, that's a long way of saying I would like to strike the second sentence.
Deputy Mayor Buxton.
Well, it does happen outside of the dais here, that council members have publicly criticized departments and staff in a public way. But I think we need to understand who we are in the system. There is a system for dealing with disappointment in regard to staff members, and it involves working through the city manager. We need to recognize that we're council members. We're not just members of the public who can't have the freedom or should have the freedom to express themselves anyway. We're part of a team, and there's a system for dealing with disappointment or frustration, which is either one person to the city manager, or through collaboration with your colleagues, come to the city manager. So, I think that system is laid out well in this document, but to personally take it upon yourself to publicly criticize outside of the system of the council member and their interaction with staff is inappropriate. And this is industry standard. This was not our language. Thank you.
Councilmember Pennington.
The last sentence in that section, it says, "If a council member wishes to influence actions, decisions, recommendations, and priorities of staff, that member must prevail upon the council to do so as a matter of council policy." So, nowhere in this does it say we can't discuss policy or have an opinion about policy. If we want to make some changes to policy, it has to come to council, because that's what we do, right? That's our job. If we have a concern with a staff member, through the chain of command, it goes to the city manager. I mean, that's the way it should work. That's your chains of command. And for, you know, an organization has to have a good chain of command, or it's going to fall apart. And we should be, we are a part of that by virtue of what we do as a council.
City Manager Mathias.
Yeah, just a couple of points about this. First of all, the idea that a council member would disagree with a department, any recommendations that come through a department would have been vetted and would have been the administrative position recommended to council. The other thing is that I think typically what you find in best practices for business is the statement wouldn't be to call out a department for policy, but to argue the policy itself. So, you wouldn't be saying, "I disagree with the department." You'd say, "I disagree with this policy." I think that the one is acceptable, because that's your business. The second is, as you know, I will, you know, carefully protect the staff from criticism, especially unwarranted, but generally any type, but we certainly welcome the discussion as to arriving at the best policy.
I would say that our staff needs to know that we're not going to stab them in the back. We're going to go through the right channels. If we have an issue with a staff member, et cetera, our obligation is to speak with our concerns to the city manager and trust that they'll be dealt with in that regard. Our job is to hire and fire the city manager if we don't get to our satisfaction. But his job is to manage his people, and this right here puts us in the way of him doing his job. So, I totally disagree with your change.
Councilmember Pennington, your second.
Case in point, you know, we just dealt with a council action with a staff member. And so, that is why this is important, and this needs to be in there.
All right. All those in favor of striking, as council member, well, could we have a second? Seeing none, it dies from lack of a second. Thank you, Councilmember Oxiger. All right. Moving on, does any council member have a call-out on any other section in 705? Seeing none, we will move on to 706. Does anybody have a call-out on 706? Seeing none, we will move on to council 707. Any call-outs? Seeing none, council 7...
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Which section are we speaking?
707.
707.
Yeah. As I said last time, I believe that there should be a line, this is new, "Any council member is entitled to meet directly with the HR director on a matter of confidentiality such as health." That's the one case, since, I'll fill the silence, that is the one case where the city manager should not mediate between ones, you know, it's a gray area as far as the status as an employee, and that's one area where the city manager should not be a mediator.
Deputy Mayor Buxton, you had a comment?
Unless my memory serves me, didn't we have this discussion, wasn't there another paragraph further up in the document that addressed that issue, where it would directly said that, if you can help, I can't remember that, which it was, like in chapter two?
I believe so. I believe that it's handled. I, go ahead, City Manager Mathias.
I apologize. Just case in point specifically, the council member raising this issue actually, at one point, did contact our HR director, and she reached out to him, and then he never responded. So, that was, you know, literally done in practice.
I'm sorry, not, not true, I was told to run it through the city manager, and that's what I am objecting to. There are gonna be times when you are going to have, it, you know, matters of health should be subject to confidentiality. Full stop.
Councilmember Steinmetz.
Yeah, section 7.07 is not the right place for it, it talks about staff roles, it does not talk about going through the city manager to contact the staff, so it's just not appropriate in this particular section. I don't see, I think you just got the numbering wrong, and I'm not quite sure.
Fair enough, could be 7.08, but.
Yeah, it was, it was in a section where due to, I believe it was like religious considering, what was it?
106.
106, so it's, that, that language is there, so there's no need to add that language here. So do we have a second on this change? Seeing none, we'll move on, all right, moving on to 7.08. Does anyone have an issue with this? Seeing none, we will move on to chapter eight. 8.01 with the meeting schedule? Any, 8.02, public notice of meetings and hearings. It's pretty standard language that's always been in our manual. Okay, B, C, and then we'll move on to 8.03, special meetings. 8.04, placing items on the agenda. This is unchanged from previous council rules. 8.05, recording and broadcasting of meetings. Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, I think the word should be, the word video should be added to this. I understand, it's, it's archaic to sit, to limit this to audio in, in 2023, and I'd like it to also say, "All meetings." There should, again, it's 2023, and there should never be a case where any meeting either, you know, by any, any body of the city is not recorded in audio and video. That is, and just for the peanut gallery, there used to be this thing, minutes used to be highly detailed. They would, the clerk, who it must have been a complete pain, would, you know, register all kinds of different notes on people's reactions and so on, and now we do what are called action minutes, which are limited only to the votes, okay? So you get absolutely no sense of the room, of what was in the minds of council and what they were trying to accomplish. The video is the record, the video is the minutes, in effect now. And the video should be for every meeting, and it should be kept in perpetuity, I mean forever. So that is my language, is that, you know, recording should be video and audio for all city meetings.
Deputy Mayor Buxton, before I call on you, could I get the chief administrative officer to come forward? I can tell you that the ad hoc committee had a long conversation with this, and we did have video added. But what was, what was stated, and by the way, what you're referring to is now there is always a recording to include video when possible, but in many cases, video wasn't guaranteed of any quality, is that correct? So the fact is, is that every effort is to make it video, but audio was the essential component that would, would, that need to be guaranteed as a recording. Deputy Mayor Buxton.
So could you clarify that, where, let's see, I'm reading right here. Well, while, while we look at that, so what happens, council member, is that we reduce our ability to meet in certain venues and certain places if we don't have the capability. So we don't always meet here at the dais or even at city hall. So that would reduce our ability to have recorded meetings if there were a quorum in a discussion situation. We just, we cut off our options, or all of a sudden we find ourselves in a situation, and now we're kind of breaking our own code because, wow, we're here and we're meeting, but we can't.
Forgive me, but there is this thing.
Just a second, Councilmember Harris, I haven't recognized you, yes.
Anyway, I think that that was part of the, the consideration for when possible.
And then we're, we're gonna have the chief administrative officer talk about the dynamics of this too, because she was part of the conversation, then I'll go to you, Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, it's highly recommended you, our audio only, and while we do every effort to make a video recording, it's not always guaranteed, for instance, just tonight, there was a glitch, and Tara did great and got it working, but there are times when that never, that couldn't happen. We had times when we didn't have a video, because we did have problems with our program. We do have a portable audio system that we can take anywhere. We can take it to our offsite, when we were doing offsite study sessions at like the Founder's Lodge or the Activity Center, and we always can have an audio recording. The official record of the council, though, are the minutes, not a audio or a video recording.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris.
So there is this little gizmo called an owl, it's about 800 bucks, and Dave Kaplan carries it with him to every High Line Forum meeting, and he plonks it down in the room, and you get a very nice Zoom meeting that captures all the people and makes an instant hybrid meeting just peachy, and we can certainly spend 800 bucks and do that, and, yeah, it's 2023, and that's really all I got.
Is there, Councilmember Steinmetz?
It, it seems there's a pretty easy way to, you know, sort of find the common ground here, and that is on the first line, "City clerk or designee shall make and keep an audio recording, comma, and video recording when possible, comma, of all standing committee meetings, business meetings of the Des Moines City Council, et cetera."
Is that? I said, "All meetings, not just standing committees, but all meetings."
Well, that's why it says, standing, I think it gets there.
So, you make a motion, we amend that to that, Councilmember Steinmetz?
Well, the motion is already.
Well, he had, he had, we had not had a second yet.
That's true, yes.
So you were, you were making that motion, okay? So all, all those, do you have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, with amended language, all those in favor, is it right? Go ahead, Councilmember Oxger.
Okay, I've just heard Councilmember Harris say, "All committee meetings."
Yep. We didn't have a motion.
Do we need to, do we need to insert in here, including ad hoc committee meetings?
Well, see, does a citizens advisory committee meetings qualify as a business meeting? That's a question.
I don't know what the answer to that is.
It, it's not of the Des Moines City Council, if you read the language of.
Well, that's, I was being somewhat rhetorical, I believe that basically every, every meeting of any advisory committee, of any standing committee, of any ad hoc committee, anything that says committee should have audio and video, onsite, offsite. Again, this is 2023, and apart from the minutes, I understand the legalities full well, but the reality is that video is the historical record. It's what tells the truth, and we should make every effort to capture that every time the city does anything concerning the people's business.
Video without audio is just a silent movie.
Forgive me, I think most people just assume that when you say, "Hey, I took a video of something."
Yeah, not in this case, because we're discussing the two and the differences.
I'm adding, I'm adding the word video, and I would like to be inclusive of all committees, whether they are standing committees, or council-driven committees, or citizen-led committees, such as, you know, even, yeah, to my mind, even things like the, that generate any kind of product that is reviewed by the city council, human services advisory, citizens advisory, it should all be recorded.
All right, before we go there, we have a motion to amend the language, and that's what we're talking about right here, is, as Councilmember Steinmetz had put it, "Video when possible." Councilmember Pennington.
So with the, you know, we have to archive our, our audio and video and, and written for quite a while on that, which is, you know, a requirement, and I know in, in some of the agencies, they, they don't record, they don't video record everything because of the space it takes on a, on a server, and to go outside to, to store that in a secure area is, is pretty expensive. So I, I guess before I open this up to all meetings, I'd like to know what the costs are relative to the storage of, of all of this data, because it's, it's, you know, and if you, and if you say you want to do it in perpetuity, then you're gonna, you know, you're gonna spend a couple of bucks on that, and, and so what's, you know, what's the cost? I think there's a little, few more questions that need to be asked, and what's the impact to staff? And, and staff time and staff having to be there at all these meetings to make sure that, that all of this is recorded. So I think, you know, council meetings and, and maybe committee meetings are one thing, but if you, you know, open up a broad spectrum of everything, then, you know, do you, when, when the council, when even though there's no business, but there's four of you going to some event, does that get recorded? I mean, it's, it leaves it, you know, pretty broad, so, but those are the questions I have. I, I, I'm not gonna support any of the amendments until at least I have some answers on this.
Point, point of order, Mayor, please.
Sure.
I do believe Councilmember Harris made a motion that was not voted on, we need to vote on that first.
He did not make a motion, Councilmember Steinmetz made a motion to do it, he just brought up the point. But so it's Councilmember Steinmetz's motion we're gonna vote on, but you had something to say before?
Yeah, and I, I just want to clarify that my, my motion is not as broad. It's not as inclusive, it would simply modify the audio and video recording, video when, when possible, recordings of all standing committees and business meetings, with the same exception for portions that were conducted in, in executive session. I think that gets us most of the way there, and it does not include any suggestion that we keep the recordings in perpetuity, but rather consistent with Washington state law, which is what would happen under these, in this case, anyway. So I just want to make sure that, what my motion is, is fairly well-defined.
So.
I'll second his motion.
Well, we already have a second, we were in the discussion of it, it was, it was going a different direction, so I was trying to bring it back. So any further discussion before we take a vote? Okay, so I see Councilmember Oxger and Councilmember Pennington and Councilmember Harris. You have the floor, sir.
Yeah, I would move to amend to add all ad hoc committee meetings.
You don't accept that?
You'll accept that?
No, I won't.
Okay, all right, do I have a second on that? Motion, okay, so we have the ad hoc portion, any discussion before we take a vote on that so we can move to the other motion? Councilmember Harris and then Councilmember Oxger.
Well, I, basically, this discussion, you know, I came up with my language for my specific motion, and it basically would be partially to add video whenever possible, that's fine, but it should be essentially all appointive meetings under the Des Moines, the municipal code, which would include these advisory committees and ad hoc committees and all of that stuff. So that basically gets it into one sentence, that, yeah, every appointive committee should be subject to audio and video recording.
That's your discussion, okay, I have Councilmember Pennington.
So, what you're saying is like if you go to the Des Moines Marina Association, and there's four of us there, we have to record that meeting? I'm not so sure they're gonna probably, not, not you, Councilmember Steinmetz.
That's not the motion.
That's not an appointive committee.
Yeah, but it's, it's, yeah, it's a committee that, that you're assigned to.
No one's assigned to that committee, they'll be the ones with liaisons, yeah.
There's other committees, I know that one not anymore, but there's other committees. So I, I guess I'm a little bit confused as to exactly what you're saying, but again, I think the clarification with Councilmember Steinmetz's motion in that it's, it's council meetings and committee meetings, that I can, I can agree with.
And Councilmember Oxger has included ad hoc in my motion, and that's what we're currently, it's an amendment to the amendment.
Yes.
That's what we're, that's what the current motion.
Yes, so we're, we're doing that, so, and do we, did we get it, and we, and we got a second from Councilmember Harris? So all those in favor of adding, including ad hoc?
Can I, I made the motion, can I, the amendment, could I speak to it?
Go ahead, sir.
I, thank you.
Thought you'd have had.
Okay, a prime example was, you know, this, the ad hoc committee that produced this document, and I can tell you that I attended two of the meetings, and there was, there was no written material to go by. The second time there was, you know, it, it was everything thrown together, and so you really couldn't follow along as what was going on, as things were being thrown out, and members of the audience were not able to, to ask questions or interject at all, and so, you know, it was extremely difficult to, to try and track what, I mean, we had this, we had this example just last week, and Councilmember, or I mean, Deputy Mayor Buxton had to come back with her proposed changes so that we could actually understand what was being talked about. Well, in that ad hoc committee meeting, it was impossible to follow what was going on, because there were three people with, with documents they were talking about, and nobody else had any idea what you were talking about at the time. So I, it would have helped to be able to go back, well, you know, once the final document was there, and figure out, figure out exactly what you were talking about. And I don't see why it's, you know, why are ad hoc committee meetings somehow sacrosanct that they, they shouldn't be recorded?
Ad hoc, ad hoc council meetings are designed for specific purposes to come up with information, recommendations, or documents to bring before the full council. They're designed to be working and efficient, right? Whereas committee meetings are different than that, they're more business-related, going over staff interaction. It's, it's, there is a distinct difference, there's a lot of discussion and so forth that goes with that, that, that's very different than, than, than a typical committee meeting or council meeting. And specifically, that's what we were doing, we were working through stuff to bring material before the council for recommendation. Since then, you've had a couple of weeks to look at the documents, to make evaluations, to make, look at recommendations and so forth. That's different than this, it's a, it's, it's a working group rather than an official meeting in that per se, that like a committee meeting would be, that, I see a clear difference. I know you don't, Councilmember Harris.
No, sir, an ad hoc committee is by definition a single-purpose, usually limited-time committee, but it is a public meeting and should be su- subject to the same work product rules, which we tend to honor more in the breach than actually in the affirmative. Many of our appointive committees generate no minutes and no work product, we only see the people once a year, and I'm sorry, Councilmember Oxger, I'm going off on a tangent, but basically, if you have no record of the thing, it makes it very, I, to your point, it makes it very difficult to follow along and, and have any sense of transparency or, you know, but, and so there's a more fundamental, you know, problem here, and I would just say we should treat every committee with the same rules of transparency, because they're, you know, again, it's 800 bucks for a, a gizmo, and why wouldn't you? That's it.
Okay, let's go ahead and take a vote on Councilmember Steinmetz's amendment, as it was. On the ad hoc, I'm sorry, ad hoc committee, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Oxger, all those opposed, Councilmember Pennington, Councilmember Steinmetz, Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Harris, and myself. It fails 2.5. All right, so now we're back to Councilmember Steinmetz's amendment with the video when possible. with the video when possible. All those in favor?
Could you restate your amendment, please?
Sure, the amendment is to add the words, "Video when possible," after the word "audio."
That's it? Thank you.
All right, all those in favor, raise your right hand. I see Councilmember Pennington, Councilmember Steinmetz, Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Nutting, and myself. All those opposed, Councilmember Harris and Oxger. That, that emotion, that, that motion for 805 language passes 5-2. All right, moving on to...
Hang on, I'd like to make one more. I would like to add the words of, "To all appointive committees."
We, we just had this discussion.
Well, okay, but I'm just.
All right, so let's, we've had the discussion. Let's go ahead and take a vote, because I want to move on.
We need a motion.
Do I have a second? Do you make a motion, and we'll see if we have a second?
I would move to add, you know, it's real tough for me to see this, but that of, strike the word "standing committee" of all standing committees and appointive committees of the DeMoin City Council.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second. Let's go, we discussed this. Let's go ahead and take a vote on it.
Well, an appointive committee under the municipal code encompasses basically everything from the ad hoc committees to things like the Citizens Advisory Committee to, you know, Human Services Advisory Committee. They all are supposed to maintain minutes. And as I said, audio and video are just, you know, that's just what it should be in 2023.
All right. Councilmember Oxger, were you trying to, did you try to say something that you wanted to speak on this?
I wasn't, yeah.
Okay, well, no, you signaled, so I thought it was you. That's, I just want clarification. Deputy Mayor Buxton, you had something?
I do. I am in some of these citizen advisory committees, and it is difficult enough to get people to volunteer to do in these capacities, but to understand that they could be subject to public ridicule for making a mistake or saying something accidental, or whether they're trying to figure out some of these things. They're not elected. They're, they're wanting to volunteer. And some of the, especially I would say the Human Services Advisory Committee, there's sensitive subject matter there, and people share different, differently in that setting. And I would be, at this point, in the process of our protocol, I would be very reticent to put that requirement on some of these volunteers, community volunteers, to discuss some of these things. I think it's good enough to get their advice.
I would add that we have several utilities in town, pool board, those types of things. I'm not, I don't think they do video, all of their meetings and record all their meetings in that regard. You do?
Yes, we do.
You do? Video?
Not only video, we have an owl that we use.
That's interesting. I don't believe the water districts or the sewer districts do. But I think what Deputy Mayor Buxton said was very effective in the fact that, yes, there are meetings that, that are too sensitive, and I think, I think both ad hoc in particular, and things like human services and so forth are exclusions. All right, go ahead.
If they're public meetings, you know, we need transparency. I mean.
People can't attend, sir.
Pardon?
People can't attend them.
People can't attend, but if they can't figure out what's going on because there's no audio system and, you know, it's, there's no chance to ask questions or anything else, the only thing you can do is go back and check the tape to figure out whether or not you've got something right or wrong.
All right.
And it's, it's purely a matter of, of, you know, if we're gonna, if we're going to talk transparency, let's have transparency.
All right, let's, let's take a vote on the amendment. All those in favor of Councilmember Harris's amendment on all, including all meetings? Please raise your right hand and say aye. I see Councilmember Harris. I see Councilmember Oxger. All those opposed, I see Councilmember Pennington, Councilmember Steinmetz, Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Nutting, and myself. The motion fails 2-5. All right. Moving on to 805, 806. Does anybody have callouts on that? Yes, sir. Councilmember Harris?
City manager, I would like to add on to 806-F, the following language. The city manager will provide all meeting materials at least 24 hours before the meeting.
This, do I have a second?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Harris, do you like to start the conversation?
Well, you know, as you can see how I struggle with this stuff, but basically, there's a surprise, beyond that, just the visual thing, it's extremely difficult to prepare for a meeting when you, literally every meeting, you're confronted with a presentation, and you're often having to make decisions on the fly. The fact is that, you know, I go to other governments, and everything that is to be discussed is in the packet. And if it, you know, and if it, there are no surprises for both the public and for the decision-makers. I understand that staff often, you know, would prefer to work right up until the last minute, but my ability to prepare takes, and the public's, takes precedence over that convenience factor. And, yeah, so 24 hours does not seem unreasonable to me for both myself and the public to be able to prepare for the meeting. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Buxton?
I can appreciate your desire, council member, but there is no board or committee meeting across the region that I'm in that when I receive a briefing or a presentation, I rarely receive the slides ahead of time. I only receive them if I'm going to be expected to either interact or make a decision. And that is one thing that is frustrating to me when I do receive quite a bit of information, and it's not clear, and I could spend two hours on it and find out I'm not expected to make a decision at all. So I make the assumption, if I have information, I'm going to be making a decision. Otherwise, briefings and presentations all over the county don't, don't include information ahead of time. That, that's my experience.
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go in, and then I'll recognize you, and then Councilmember Harris again. I think tonight was a perfect example. You were given the materials for the financial update, but the police chief update or the ferry update were minute-to-minute. Nothing wrong with that. I think the city manager's gonna give us what he can, how he can, and that's his job to do and ours to dictate. Councilmember Oxger, go ahead.
Well, I will tell you one difficulty I have is that when we're given a PowerPoint presentation that we've not seen before and do not have the ability to go back and check previous pages to gain understanding as to, you know, what's going on, it is extremely difficult. And I would also add that the ferry report, last December 1st, I believe it was, we did not have the final report before we were asked to make a decision, and it was only made of, made public the following day. It's, this stuff should be in our hands no less than 24 hours. And I will point out that it used to be the policy of the city government that if the materials were not, not ready by the Friday prior to a meeting, that that item was pulled from the agenda, that the staff was given, you know, the full information, and...
You're saying the city manager's report, portion of it?
I'm saying any report.
We have, I have Councilmember Harris, then I go back to Deputy Mayor Buxton, both beyond your second times.
That was the policy of the city back in, you know, another era. But I can just say that I know of several governments where this is the policy. Certainly, if the, what happened tonight with the ferry update, the, the city manager was politely responding to, you know, a request, that's a very different thing from showing up with a PowerPoint that I, you know, I see the file date is like two days ahead, okay? Well, if you're taking several days to put together multiple PowerPoints, we should at least know what's coming. And I'll just, my, to my little war story is the ARPA meeting where there were literally three versions of what we were discussing. One on the screen, one in the packet, and then there was another prior version that one of my colleagues was looking at, and it was like we're looking at literally three sets of numbers. So 24 hours ahead of the meeting, you should just know what's coming, and it should be one standard document. And that's it.
I have Deputy Mayor Buxton for her second time, then Councilmember Oxger, then Councilmember Steinmetz. Go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
I, I think it just needs to be very clear. This is the city manager report presentation briefing. I can't count the times when I hear in a meeting, are the slides going to be available? Can you send me this slide presentation when this is done? That's because people don't have them in their packets. You, if it's for information purposes only, the very next day, we could ask the same question. If you want the slide presentation, you can get it for informational purposes. You can watch the video after if you need more clarity. We're specifically talking about a situation where we're getting a briefing. There's no decision to be made. Now, if you have a point about a decision you have to make, that's not this item. That's not F.
All right. It's five minutes to, before I go in succession as identified. Can I have a motion to extend the meeting? Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion? Nope. All of those in favor, raise your right hand. I see Councilmember Pennington, Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Steinmetz, Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Nutting, and myself. All those opposed, Councilwoman Oxger. The meeting is extended till 10:00. 6 to 1. All right, so you were next, sir, and then you, I believe, as I called.
So I, you've, Deputy Mayor Buxton, you've heard, you know, the concern about, you know, these presentations. Would you entertain then somewhere that there be a 24-hour notification for any presentation that's made before the council?
If a decision needs to be made.
If a decision needs to be made, where would you put it?
Wherever the information for, for compiling the agenda is.
See, Madam Mathias?
Yeah, okay, so items that are voted on by the council that appear in the agenda packet are prepared at least by the Friday before the next week's meeting, okay? Now, in the past, just historically, the former city manager never used the city manager report for any purpose, okay? We've turned that into an informational dynamic for the council. Rarely do we ask for any motion, and it's not an ordinance, not a resolution, a motion in terms of direction for a current item that may have just come up, okay? A lot of times, the, the presentation material in the city manager's report is not done prior to 5:00 or 5:30 on the day of the meeting. And the simplest way to address what your concern is, is we will simply stop having items for the city manager's report. That's easy. Then there will be no issue about 24 hours in advance. We try to give the council maximum amount of information we can, okay? If that's, if it's unacceptable that that be provided in the manner in which we are able to do it, then we will be unable to do it.
Your, your second time, go ahead.
Well, the problem is, is that, okay, it is a verbal report, and there's no opportunity to go back and check information, determine, you know, full understanding of what's going on. It's, you know, there also used to be, the city manager was responsible for a weekly, monthly, and quarterly report. We haven't had those since 2017. So, you know, it's, those written reports are, you know, highly valuable. Otherwise, we're being asked to make decisions on the fly. And I specifically refer to the passenger ferry report of last December. And the consultant said, "Well, this essentially is the report." His, his report that he presented on the fly, and we then were expected to vote to proceed. And I specifically asked, "When is the final report going to be published?" And City Manager Mathias, you said, "The next day, after we'd already made a decision." That is, that is unacceptable.
All right. Councilmember Steinmetz?
Thanks, this is my first time.
I know it is.
Okay. I'm, I'm hearing a lot of the word "should," and yeah, that's absolutely correct. We should have information before we vote on anything. We should have information ahead of time. That is not always possible. I, I tend to agree that if there's a decision point to be made, and we're going to be asked, that, yeah, that would be a very good idea to have 24 hours notice of that, whatever that information is that we need. Generally, I believe that is available. It comes in the packet. The packets tend to have quite a bit of information in them. Takes a long time to sit down and read them sometimes, but nonetheless, it's there if you go looking for it. And if it's not there, you have the opportunity at that point to ask some additional questions. So, you know, I, I, I see no harm in putting up for a decision by the council on putting a 24-hour rule, that everything should be in front of the council by then, and I don't think that's an unreasonable standard. But, you know, for the informational process that the city manager's report has turned into, which I find pretty valuable, I, I don't think that needs to be, unless we're being asked to make a decision. I don't think you need to get that information 24 hours, because the point is to relay the information to you, and you're not being asked to do anything with it. And as a consequence, you know, I, I think that the appropriate way to address this is for those decision points, we should get 24 hours to have everything to us. Point of order.
No, I'm not, I'm not recognizing you. Go ahead for a second.
Point of order. I'm done.
You're done? Okay, go ahead now. What's your point of order?
I, I believe you're discussing, you know, the, the discussion has moved on from the city manager's report to, I had asked Council, or Deputy Mayor Buxton, where it should be in here for the notification. It's beyond the city manager's report now, what we're talking about.
We have no motion for that. Go ahead, go ahead.
I just want to say, yeah, boy, this train went off in a different.
I'd like to stick to the motion.
I, I just, you know, my intention was, you know, frankly, like Chief Thomas has, has been gracious enough to recognize various officers, and that gets put into the city manager's report. That's also what I was talking about. I don't want a surprise like that. I want to know if we're going to recognize six brave officers for some noble, you know, event. I want to know about that ahead of time. I don't want that kind of surprise either. I, this notion of having a decision in the city manager's report is rubbish. There should be no decision points in the city manager's report. That's an agenda item. This is, that's just a basic parliamentary procedure thing. So to me, that's not.
We're going back.
It's a valid point, Councilmember Oxger, but basically, when that happens, that, the whole meeting has gone off the rail.
All right, we're going back to the city manager report. It was said that something, that the, that the motion was to... It was said that something, that the ci, that the motion was to put, but that it had to be 24 hours in advance of the meeting.
Yeah.
And we've had that discussion, we've had fervent, fervent discussion, we've had multiple times. I'm going to call for a vote. All those in, we have not taken that vote. All those in favor of adding the 24-hour criteria to the city manager piece, and I'm going to say it would be an F, all those say, a, all those in favor, raise your right hand and say aye. I see Councilmember, or you don't have to say aye, my bad. Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Oxger, all those opposed, Councilmember Pennington, Councilmember Steinmetz, Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Nutting, and myself. That, that fails moving on to the next item.
Well, no.
Well, we just had the discussion with Council, Deputy Mayor Buxton as to where she would put in the, in the order as far as having.
Councilmember Oxger, it doesn't matter. It's been, it's, we've already had a vote, and it's not going to be included.
It's not going to be included under F in the city manager's report, but the, but the requirement that.
So, so make a motion, make a motion that you would like to put it and where you'd like to recommend it.
I'm going back to, I would like to ask Deputy Mayor Buxton, again, where exactly she was, she was recommending that we put it, and would she be willing to put it in the form of a motion?
Pardon? Deputy Mayor Buxton. Go, go ahead.
Okay, and, and, in Chapter 8.04, at the very end, it says, "After the preliminary agenda has been approved by the presiding officer, a copy of the agenda and supporting materials shall be prepared for council members, the city manager, and the press by the close of the business, business Friday prior to the regular council meeting, except in case of an emergency. Emergency items may be added to an agenda in accordance with state law." So I think that pretty much covers.
Yes.
It doesn't say 24 hours, it just says state law.
All right, so we've.
That's where, that's where I was.
We've had that, we've had that, we're moving on. All right, next item. Councilmember Harris.
So, this is, I'm, I'm asking, there's two things, but first, the, I would like there to, I believe the last letter in 806 is Q. I would like to add an R. Following each meeting, public comment and any materials included at the meeting, which were not in the original packet, will be posted on the city website with a notification. In other words, the city currently, what the practice is, the.
Let's get him, let's get a second on the motion first, before you explain. Do I have a second? Okay, go ahead, now explain.
So, the current policy, which is basically, the, the clerk adds all of the public comment and correspondence and presentations to the agenda packet. And what that does is, it creates multiple versions of the same document, and there's no distinction. So, in other words, the person downloads the packet the week before the meeting, and it's just sort of empty, and then they don't recognize that the day after, it's this 400-page thing with all kinds of wonderful stuff. So what we should do is, we should simply put on the city website on the calendar when that update occurs with a link to it, so that the public goes, "Yay, I can go and see, you know, the correspondence and the public comments and the presentations now." You need to make the public aware that that change has occurred. It sounds, it's, it's a really big deal.
So, their standard procedure, and according to RCWs, is they put all that stuff together and post it the next day when they're available to do it already.
You simply inform the public that you have made that update to the document, that the update has occurred. Otherwise, they won't know. One of the most common questions I get is like, you know, "Where's the correspondence? Where's the, where are the comments? Am I being heard?"
All right, any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. I see, oh, I'm going to go on that one too. De, uh, Councilmember, Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Steinmetz, Councilmember Oxger, and myself. All those opposed? Councilmember Pennington, Deputy Mayor Buxton, and Councilmember Nutting. That motion passes.
Mayor, can we get a?
Language? So I would say the, the language is that, that upon the po, the adding the additional materials that we, they would normally do in the course of business to the packet, there will be a notification made to the public that that has been completed. Is that pretty correct?
I can reread the, it's, it's like one sentence. Following each meeting, public comment, correspondence, and any materials included at the meeting, which were not on the original packet, will be posted on the city website with a notification.
But that has to be, it can't be immediately after. They would need, they, they, they take the Friday to put, to obtain all the materials.
It just says, following the meeting, it doesn't.
Following the meeting, okay. Following the meeting. Does that work? Do we have that?
Where is this going?
This is going to be Q, right, or R right after Q.
Mayor.
Just a second. I want to make sure he, he has this.
We'll watch the video.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, please. Don't drink when you do it. All right, Deputy Mayor Buxton.
I mean, could the notification just be in the form of one sentence that you say at the end?
It, it would just be a public announcement that the, that the, the packet has been updated from the pre, the night, the previous night's meeting. Something very simple. That that way, they're doing what they're doing, and it doesn't include a lot of extra work. All right. Moving on to 807.
Well, ha, ha, hang on, this is, this is, I did the easy one first, you know, where everybody's getting along, but, um, 806-K ordinances, I wish to reinstate the second reading. In, not in 806-K?
806-K is new business.
Well, I want to reinstate the second reading, and so I'm not sure where to put it in there.
So, could, could we do that in the form of a motion?
Well, that's why, yes. All ordinances passed by the city council will require a second reading. I, I essentially want to reinsert the language from Rule 26, verbatim. Okay? But just call it, you know, but just put it in here in the new.
Do I have a second? Okay, have Councilmember Oxger with the second. All right, you, so you've had your discussion. Any other council members want to make a, have a discussion? Deputy Mayor Buxton, I'll start with you.
Thank you, Mayor. So, in regard to 26A, 26A is not foresight for good governing. It's a response to poor governing. It's a response to a poor decision or poor government. Otherwise, every city would, would have incorporated it. It's not part of state law, but many cities do not. So, our committee format generally provides a two-touch system, or a two, a two-touch idea for topics, generally, okay? Our, this draft manual provides for second readings as a matter of council member motion and majority vote. So we can have, if the majority of this council wants a second reading, we can do it at any time we want. Removing this requirement offers the potential of all good optics, and this is what I mean by that. If you get two or more readings when needed, and one reading in order to govern well and streamline process without breeding suspicion, here's a problem. Keeping 26A guarantees two readings, but it always breeds suspicion when choosing streamlining as good governance. If you want to streamline, there's always this, "Oh, you're hiding something." And I, I really dislike that feeling of making a good decision and feeling like I'm being sneaky. So I like the option of choosing a second reading when it's necessary. So that's why I, I don't, I don't want to require two readings. I prefer streamlined government.
All right, I believe I had Councilmember Nutting. Did I see you, Councilmember Steinmetz, you raised your hand, and then I have Councilwoman Oxger and Councilmember Harris. You, you have the floor, sir.
Okay. Some cities have one reading on everything. Some cities have two readings on everything. Some cities have three readings on everything. There is no regular way to do this. It's done in a lot of different ways. What we currently have is a two-reading rule with the ability to waive that second reading. That exception has swallowed our rule. We simply don't do business that way. And that's a problem, because we're always waiving it. And, you know, when I first started on the council, I was opposed to waiving it all the time, trying to give everybody more time to respond. We never got anything. I mean, the two things that we, that we had on second reading tonight, these protocol manuals and the bond stuff, I think we had one cor, one piece of correspondence regarding the bonds, nothing about the protocol manuals. Nobody simply responded to it. It is a superfluous step. This isn't to say that there aren't times when that is necessary, when it is just a good idea to go through the whole first reading and give it until the next time around. So as a consequence, we can ask for it, and we can get that. And that's a more practical way to run a government, not that we're saying we do two readings, but we always kind of waive it and just push it on through, because that's, that's when people, you know, use that as some kind of suspicion, as Deputy Mayor Buxton just alluded to. It just doesn't make sense. This is the more practical way to do it. And ask for that second reading if you want it, and if there is a good reason for time to have that second re, reading, or power to you, you're going to get it. Nobody's losing anything from the way that we currently do things right now.
Councilmember Oxger.
Okay, I, I couldn't disagree more. The, the, we're talking about the convenience for us. I'm talking about the convenience for the public. The public, you know, should have an opportunity to hear things and then respond. The, the, the way we do this is, we have citizen comments first, and then we get into the issues, and something can come up. The public has no opportunity to, to weigh in, and so we don't know. And, you know, the thing of, this is supposed to be a deliberative process, not speedy Gonzales. I mean, and, and the thing is, is if there is no objection after the second reading, or to be the second reading, it's not like, you know, we've got this huge rush to do everything, you know, as quickly as possible. It's just, okay, it comes up on the agenda the next time, and we do it if there's no problem. But I think when you, when you make the default, uh, that we're not going to give the, the public a chance to chime in, and again, I cite the example of, something's brought up here, the public has already spoken, they've already had their opportunity to speak. They haven't had a chance to come back in and chime in on what we're doing. So I would, you know, suggest that, you know, no, definitely the default should be two readings. Thank you.
Councilmember Harris.
Where things went off the rails upstream was when the administration felt it was a good idea to put that override into basically every packet. It's meant for emergencies, and having it i, on the agenda is the original sin. It was meant for emergencies. Unless there is a true emergency, the override should not be in the packet. It should only be used in true, when there's true need. But by having it in almost every agenda item as a convenience, it was in the bond sale, okay? If, if people forget from last week, we just sort of blew pie, blew by it, because obviously it would have looked bad to, you know, take a vote then, but it was there. We just didn't take a vote on it. That's the, that was the, you know, nutty thing about it. It's basic behavioral economics. It's the difference between the checkbox being checked by default and you donate your kidney, or it not being checked, and then nobody donates nothing. All right? It, you, it, we are, Rule 26 selects for the good behavior, and the good behavior should be basically to give the public two whacks at this, because the truth is, most people do not find out about the business of the council until after that first reading. It's just, you know, we've got a lot of problems with public engagement, and this will only make it worse. Perhaps at a future date, when we improve public engagement and you can get more people to show up, then you could do a first reading, because then you would feel like, "Oh, okay, great." You know, people were aware, and they had their shot at it. But at this point, the public needs two shots at this as much as we do, and basic freshman philosophy, it only takes three minutes. If you've got four votes, okay, what's the big deal? You wait two weeks, you get, you've got the same four votes, three minutes, done, onto something else. It makes, i, i, if there's no practical difference one way or another, and one way gives the public another crack at it, why wouldn't you have two readings? Thank you.
I'll interject, then I'll call on you, Councilmember Steinmetz, again. RCWs are clear about what has, requires a second reading. In most cases, we're waiving it right away, or something superficial, or something like that. I think, as example, last week, or when we had the bonding issue, we thought in good prudence it was worthy of a second reading, and that's, that's the council's decision to make. Most of them were, quite honestly, would have been to do a second reading, would have been a waste of time, as, as Deputy Mayor Buxton said. The thing is that, that in this particular case, it's about efficient government, it's about moving through, it's about prudence of what's effective. I completely disagree, or I completely am against this amended proposal. So with that, I'll turn it over to Deputy Mayor, I mean, City, or Councilmembers Steinmetz.
Whoever, whoever, I mean.
Yeah, that guy over there.
Yeah, my, I mean, my point is, you get the packet published on Friday. Now, it's unfortunate that more citizens don't read the packet, but they have from Friday until Thursday to prepare public comment. They show up, they can make public comment. It is not that common anymore. They certainly have all that time in between Friday to Thursday to send us emails. Some do, not a lot. There is plenty of opportunity for public comment, and on, and on most issues, it's simply not there. They don't, you're not going to get that level of public comment. On those issues that are big and controversial, like, like the bonds, it'd be great. We put it over and did a second reading on it. That's what ultimately matters. There just is no reason to go through the rigmarole, and it's not a three-minute issue. I'm sorry, but, you know, some of my colleagues here take three minutes just to figure out what their point is. And it just, it rolls on and on and on, and here we are, you know, looking at 10, almost 10 to, 10 to 10, you know, trying to get through this, which we have put over to a second reading. It's not a simple process. It allows for streamlining government, it allows us to pick and choose those things without going through the rigmaroles of coming up with some emergency that's, requires that the waving, or that justifies the waving of Rule 26A. So let's just reverse the process, and that's all we're posing in, in, in this. And it's a more efficient way and a better way, and really, there's plenty of opportunity for people to comment. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Pennington, then you, Councilmember Harris.
You know, I'm a proponent of people being engaged in their, their city government, and for those of you that are staying here tonight late, thank you. I mean, this is where you hear things. But you're also very engaged. You know what's going on, and that's the responsibility, that's your responsibility, right? That's a personal responsibility, whereas if you want.
Whereas if you want to be engaged and know what's going on with your city government, it's not like it's behind some big cloak, you know? And so for those that care enough to go to the city website and pull up an agenda, and pull up the, the documents that, that are going to be talked about in that week, or look at the futures and see what's coming up in the future, they're, they're engaged and they care. To, to go to, and, and there are some things that need a second reading. But I think there's, you know, some routine things that don't do that. But the ones, you got, you folks, and I'm talking to, you know, the three of you that are here, you know, you're engaged, you know what's going on. And, and you do that. You know, it's not incumbent upon, you know, us to, to, to hang out and give them, give folks, you know, we can't, can't, can't get folks to, to come to, to the watering hole and take a drink, you know? They got to do it on their own. And so I think we make those opportunities available. There, it's clear how, how, how to, to access that. We've hired a communication person to, to help enhance that communication in the future. And, and so, you know, I, I think there's a whole lot of conversation, and, and that's great, we, we've beat it around. But I don't know that, that, you know, the default is, is what, what, you know, it needs to be. So, and, and I don't know where to add in here, but when we go late like this, I'd like to have it in the council rules that we order pizza or something.
All right, Councilmember Harris, then Councilmember Oxger. For your second times, I believe.
Good gravy, what is wrong with the public? That's really, the fact that we're doing this at, you know, I mean, you can look at it a couple of ways, that we're doing this at 5:00 to 10:00. And, but we're basically blaming the public for the world changing. And rather than trying to pull people in, it's like, yeah, you know, gee whiz, if only those people were better, you know, that like when, when I was a kid, you know, yeah, people should, yeah, right, whatever.
And you voted against the, the communication folks, sorry. All right, wait, so a second. I have Councilmember Oxger. Yeah, that's what I was just about to stop. I, I put him on hold for a move to extend for, till, till 10:30? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Oh, do I have a second? I'm sorry, my bad. Second. I'm going to second the motion if no one will. All right. All right. I will, I seconded the motion. Typically, I don't, but I will in this particular case. All those in favor extending till 10:30, raise your right hand. I see Councilmember Steinmetz, Deputy Mayor Buxton, Councilmember Nutting, and myself, all those opposed, Councilmember Pennington, Councilmember Harris, and Councilmember Oxger, so that we will. Yes, go ahead.
I, I'm sorry, go on.
I just have to address this vote. Under our council rules, we need three fours of the council members.
Oh, so we don't have enough. So that pretty much means that in three minutes we'll adjourn. So the best thing we can do at this particular point is to pick up it, can you go up to so I can see the number or where we are exactly? I just want to make sure.
Oh, I'm sorry. It is.
I just want to get the number.
806-K.
806-K, 806-K. And we would pick that up on the June 22nd meeting. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
A second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, pass is 7-0. The meeting is adjourned. The next regular council meeting will be June 22nd.